Good evening. The May 28th, 2019 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thoreau, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Paul Gibbs, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Judy Zanetti, Public Education Foundation Officer, please introduce the individuals who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Good evening Chairman King, Dr. Mayer, and School Board members. It is my honor tonight to allow you to be introduced to two students representing the Take Stock in Children graduating class of 2019. Tomorrow evening, we'll be celebrating forty-six students in our Take Stock in Children program that have fulfilled their qualifications to earn their Take Stock in Children scholarship. Cumulatively, those forty-six students will have earned over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in Florida prepaid scholarships through our Take Stock in Children program. So to introduce you to our students this evening, I'm going to ask Diana Scroggy, our Take Stock in Children college success coach, to introduce you.
Introduce them.
Introduce, introduce you to them. Madam Chairwoman, Dr. Mayer, School Board, thank you so much for having us tonight. This is my favorite time of year. It's to work with our seniors and after four years, see where all their hard work has paid off and see where they're going. We're really excited because we have kids graduating and heading off in all different directions and that is our role as Take Stock staff to make sure that we guide our students on the path that is right for them. We have students that are heading to MTC for technical certificates. We have students heading to CF. We have students heading to universities in the state of Florida. We even have kids going to Ivy League schools. So we are really excited about what the future has for these students. Tonight, I have two of our superstars to introduce to you. Shadé Teal is a graduate of Forest High School as well as the College of Central Florida. She will be heading to UCF, Summerby, and she is a journalism major. And we also have Jeffrey Hall. Jeffrey is a graduate of Westport High School. He is also a graduate of the College of Central Florida and he will be heading off to the University of Florida this summer where he will be studying nursing. Both of these students were chosen to come speak with you tonight because they have also been recognized by Take Stock at the state level. Shadé was a finalist for Leaders for Life, which is a statewide leadership honorary where six students are chosen across the state to not only receive a full ride scholarship to match with their Florida prepaid account, but also leadership opportunities. She made it to the top fourteen and was recognized for that. And Jeffrey was recognized as our county's outstanding Take Stock student this year. Both of them, obviously with where they're headed, have done outstanding academically, but they are both leaders in their schools and their communities. So I'm gonna allow Shadé to do the pledge and then Jeffrey will read a few words for you. Thank you.
Okay, so...
Does everyone wanna stand for the pledge?
Yeah, can everyone please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Oof. Alright, like she said, I'm Jeffrey Hall. Her recent honors graduate from Westport High School as well as the College of Central Florida with a concentration in nursing. So I wrote an essay like she said on leadership earlier this year about what I believe the qualities of, what I believe some qualities of a leader's, of a leader were. Amongst many other attributes, I shared that leaders are on task, put others before themselves, have the ability to make a difference, know how to, and know how to overcome challenges in life. I knew from a young age, I possessed those qualities of a leader. I just had to find them. I did not have an easy start. Both of my biological parents had addiction issues and couldn't care for me. DCF, like, was involved in my life, I mean, was involved from the beginning of my life like many other children. And my adoptive mother, someone closer to the mother, to my mother's mom's side of the family, adopted me at six months. And while she always cared for me, she was old enough to be my grandmother. Always, it always gets confused in the rooms when people see her, but her financial situation was never good, so I was kinda placed in a situation that wasn't much better than the one I was already in. Her husband actually passed in January. I was born in February, so I didn't have a father, a father figure. She did have four boys on her side and I had one brother on my side who was also from Ocala, but they didn't make the best choices. They were in and out of prison every few years, so I didn't have them to follow behind or them to lead the way for me. So I did have terrible conduct at school. I think at times, I was one inch away from being placed in an alternative placement school. Like we always say, everyone deserves a second chance. I was given about fifty-plus. I made myself look bad just to make others laugh. I was one of those kids, always wanting to see people happy. My adoptive mother, my adoptive mother, she did do her best, but her health and her age kept her from being very involved in my life, so I like to see myself as very independent, although I'm not, I have many others here with me. But I'm thankful to my teachers at both A Street and Osceola, as well as my school resource officer, Officer Van, for seeing the potential in me and mentoring me, taking me under his wing. They helped me to begin to focus and have that plan for myself that I would, that would allow me to have a better life. In eighth grade, I was given the opportunity to interview for Take Stock in Children. It was the best opportunity I would say in my life so far. And after I received that, I knew I was college-bound. I chose to attend Westport High School because of the awesome medical program there as well as the early college program. I wanted to play football too, but after a few years of playing varsity football there, I kinda realized that, that professional football player dream was kinda unrealistic. I was always talented in school, though, and I knew in order to get where I wanted to get in life, that success I wanted to obtain, I needed to focus on that. Along with the help of my Westport family, teachers, staff, everybody from guidance down to the maintenance, and my Take Stock mentor, I can already say I'm farther than anyone in my family or anyone in my community. Many of the kids that I grew with are already deep into the juvenile justice system. Many of the kids that I called friends. Many people around me only really care about the success that it had to do with sports. They often ask me, "What are you playing this season, man?" You know, despite the height and/or the weight that I look, I was kinda talented. I was an athlete, I like to say. Played every position from quarterback to lineman sometimes. But they're shocked to tell, when I tell them that my new focus is school, you know, academics. They might think that I'm wasting my time, but I say I'm taking advantage of every opportunity that's been handed to me, well, that I work for. I'm proud to say after all this hard work and hard choices, I've been accepted as of February 8th to the University of Florida, like Ms. Diana said. And I started Summerby. I plan to become a nurse, eventually someone, eventually somewhere in the future, a nurse practitioner, and then oncology, orthopedics, or pediatrics. I know years ahead will not be handed to me. I will have to work hard, I will have to work hard to get it done. There will be ups and downs, but I will give it my best. I promised that to myself. I believe in every, I believe that everything happens for a reason. I'm glad to be the person I am today and I always say, even if time machines were a thing, I would not change anything in my past. Through all those hard, through all of the challenges I fought through and with all the help of my teachers, school staff, mentors at each of the Marion County schools I attended, I knew I do possess those qualities of a leader. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight in front of you all. And thank you to the Public Education Foundation and Take Stock in Children for giving students like me those other forty-four that you were told about. And I mean, well, forty-five, including the one behind me here, Shadé. Yeah, the chance to realize that our futures are bright and that we can become whatever we set our minds to. Thank you.
I just wanna say...
Ho, 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 ho.
You don't get to run away that fast. You know, adversity brings strength and both of you, I know your story as well. Both of you have had a lot of adversity in your life and you have turned that into strength. I look forward to following you and seeing the best that you can be. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Yeah. Why y'all on the rest of me?
Nervous being up here.
That's how we feel. Listen, we are extremely proud of what you both have done and the other kids there in the foundation that we're gonna be celebrating on tomorrow. I just wanna continue to encourage you, whatever we can do to help push you along. None of us got where we are by ourselves and everybody needs a little help sometimes, so we're proud of you. I look forward to hearing great things from UCF and UF. I had a text earlier today that told me that you were gonna be at UF and I said, "Oh, God, of all the schools, why not Florida State?"
Oh, that was kinda funny, you know, 'cause I am a Seminole myself.
But, listen...
Their football team is not doing good.
The thing is, is education. I like what you said about being great in athletics, however, taking the focus off of the athletics and moving forward to your education. I felt too that I was really great in athletics when I was in school. However, people would say, "You're too short. You're not gonna, you won't ever make it to the pros." And, and someone told me, "Listen, if you focus on your education, you might break your leg, you might twist the ankle and never play sports again, but they can't take away your education." So I held that. I encourage you all to hold that. And journalism, I'm looking forward to reading a book from you. So, and writing a book for us and possibly y'all coming back and doing something for Marion County Education too.
No question.
Alright, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Zanetti. Scroggy?
Yes, thank you.
Ladies, thank you all.
With the exception of Item C15.2, outside counsel agreement with Attorney Mark Levitt of Allen, Norton &amp; Blue, PA, to provide legal services for twelve months, which has been pulled and placed under discussion. I recommend approval of the agenda for the May 28th, 2019 School Board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Thoreau, second by Mr. Cummings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There's a pose like sign. May I have a motion to approve, sorry, the motion passed five zero. Got ahead of myself. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March 12th, 2019 School Board meeting?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Cummings, second by Ms. McCall. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? See a none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March 13th, 2019 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall, second by Ms. Thoreau. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? See a none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March 26th, 2019 School Board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCall, second by Mr. Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections? See a none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed five zero. Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent, would like to recognize the attainment of Eagle Scout by Forest High School junior Jonathan Thomas Warren.
We are very excited for this moment and I would like to turn it over to Ms. McCall, who is going to lead this presentation.
I would like to address Principal Brown and Jonathan, would you please join me at the podium?
It's my distinct pleasure to recognize Jonathan Warren for his accomplishments. As you know, or you may not know, the Eagle Scout Award is the highest award that a Boy Scout can get. Jonathan is from Troop 1000, I'm sorry, Troop 100, sorry. You have to obtain, you have to do a lot of things for Eagle Scout. You have to obtain twenty-one merit badges, but he is an overachiever and he obtained thirty-one merit badges. He has held positions as senior patrol leader, assistant patrol leader, chaplain, media manager, and he attended Philmont Adventure Camp in 2018. With him tonight and who has helped him along this journey are his parents, Michael and Luann Warren, right here. We know that our children, it takes a village and the parents are at the top of that village. I would like to introduce Principal Elizabeth Brown, just to say a couple of words, and then we have a proclamation for you.
So obviously, the Forest High School Wildcat family is extremely proud of Jonathan. He is a definite asset to our student body. He's a leader on campus. He works extremely hard, not only at his academics, but also at extracurricular activities. He has recently applied to be a member of HOSA and has shared with me that he thinks that he wants to go into the medical field at some point in time. So Jonathan, from all of your Forest High School Wildcats, we are so proud of you and congratulations.
So Jonathan, if you will join me, we have a proclamation. Whereas Eagle Scout is the highest award given by the Boy Scouts of America, and whereas only a small number of all scouts attain the coveted rank of Eagle, and whereas Eagle Scouts involve themselves in school and community activities, and whereas Eagles go on to become leaders in government, business, and education, and whereas Jonathan Thomas Warren has fulfilled the requirements of leadership, service, and outdoor skills and earned the merit badges necessary for Eagle Scout Award, and whereas Jonathan Thomas Warren is a student at Forest High School, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Marion County School Board recognizes Jonathan Thomas Warren for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout and joins his family and friends in congratulating him on this very high honor. Dated this 28th day of May, 2019, signed by our board chair and our superintendent. Jonathan, congratulations.
Um, do you say Jonathan?
Would you like to say anything? Um, thanks.
Can we say something to you?
Sure.
Um, you know, I'm so proud of you and I wish so many young men would jump back in. There's so many things for youth to do these days and, and scouts, when I was growing up for the girls and the boys, was a really fun thing that we were all involved in. And not so many children today because there's so many other options for them to be involved in, but I really wish there was a way we could rev that back up in our schools and in our communities because I didn't realize Ms. McCall was gonna be giving the proclamation. So when I saw you sitting in the audience, I looked at her and I said, "You know, the scouts just grow up to be such great citizens and such great leaders." And she goes, "Yes, they do." And then she goes, "I didn't know she was reading the proclamation." And that's basically what it said. So, so anyway, congratulations. And I know you'll go a long, long way and sometimes, you know, there's people along the way that are naysayers because they're really kinda jealous of you. So congratulations, okay?
Thanks.
It's obvious that you've accomplished so much already and yet you're incredibly humble. Maintain that. Congratulations, truly.
Congratulations. Scouting is vital, I think is still vital and relevant in our communities and we need to, as Ms. Stacy said, I think we really need to push it some more. Most of us start out as scouts at some point and then we kinda get to high school and some things happen and start playing sports and all those other things, but you stuck with it, so.
I did slow down a little in high school.
Did you?
Yeah.
Normally, normally, most, most of us kinda stop around eighth, ninth grade and things change, but if you were able to press through and press on, good job, good job.
Yeah, congratulations. I'm not concerned for you at all slowing down or listening to naysayers because what I have read earlier is out of what, thirty-one, you have thirty-one badges, correct?
Yes.
Or merits? And it's just required that you had twenty-five. So that right there is telling me that you're gonna go above and beyond. And so if you slowed down, you're amazing, so it'll be good to see what you're doing. So congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Very proud.
Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud. Thank you. Very proud.
Mr. Lopez, can you share a little bit about how this money will be used?
Yes. You want me to hold the check?
Well, maybe Mr. Butler can hold it up.
This donation is vital for our program, because we really, the fact that this is not a earmarked money give us a lot of flexibility in terms of addressing needs as they arise. You know, we are really trying to remain flexible and have resources to really respond to the need. Sometimes, you know, we think that the only need will be one particular category. But in fact, a family typically have multiple needs. So, having resources that allow us to respond to that is key. And this money definitely will be used very wisely, not just for school supplies, for financial assistance, but also for a variety of other needs that kids will, as they face barriers in school, we can eliminate it by using those resources. So, it's gonna be used flexibly and creatively to help families.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Daly, I just wanted to say quickly, sixteen years of donating is just tremendous. And donations like yours really help level the playing field for our kids and help them compete. And without these donations, we wouldn't be seeing the level of success stories that we're really seeing. So, thank you.
Cumulatively, do you know how much you've raised?
Two hundred thousand?
Two hundred thousand dollars?
That's what you said. Yeah.
Over two hundred thousand that you have given to our homeless program. Thank you. Thank you for your commitment. That's amazing.
We appreciate it. We truly appreciate it, because sometimes we don't realize how many kids are affected in our school district that have some homeless issues and a lot of other varying issues, as Mr. Lopez said. So, we appreciate that.
Yeah, we do. And what stands out to me is that your commitment for children, that is no fault of their own, you know? And so, as a community and a bank, just coming in and help fill that need and assist wherever it may be, without the strings attached, is just very meaningful. So, again, thank you very much, and we're appreciative, so.
Thank you, Mrs.
And we still have, Mr. Lopez, we still have over three thousand homeless students in the district?
Yes, the last count was two thousand and fourteen. Two thousand and fourteen, the last count.
The last count, okay. Lower than we did. That's good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now ask the School Board's Attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the School Board tonight.
We have none, so.
We don't have any. Let me move forward. May I have a motion to receive public input prior to board approval adopting the job description for the Superintendent and Related Board Policies 3.21, 3.22, 3.23, 3.24, 3.25, 3.26, and adopt Board Policy 8.62, Data Protection at Public Hearing, scheduled for June twenty-fifth. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Cummings, second by Ms. McCall. Do we have any discussion? See, and none, all those in.
Right, you gotta hold the public hearing.
Okay, I'm getting ahead of myself. All right, so the Superintendent. Do I declare the, okay, 'cause I'm backwards then. Okay.
Okay. This public hearing assures compliance with Board Policy 4.21 by providing an open notice public hearing to receive comments on recommended board policies prior to adoption. The vote on the adoption of the job description for the Superintendent and Related Board Policies 3.21, 3.22, 3.23, 3.24, 3.25, 3.26, and Board Policy 8.62, Data Protection, will be during a public hearing at the June twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen School Board Meeting.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to provide input on the board policies recommended for adoption? See, and none. Okay, and so we don't vote, correct? Or we do vote?
No vote.
No vote, okay. I'm a little confused on that word. All right. May I have a motion to receive public input prior to board approval of the amended procedures of Independent Citizens Referendum Oversight Committee ICROC at a public hearing scheduled for June twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen? We need a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall, second by Ms. Thrower. All right, Dr. Mayor.
Okay. This public hearing assures compliance with Board Policy 4.21 by providing an open notice public hearing to receive comments on recommended amended procedures prior to adoption. The vote on the adoption of amended procedures of Independent Citizens Referendum Oversight Committee, or ICROC, will be during a public hearing at the June twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen School Board Meeting.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to provide input on the amended procedures recommended for the adoption? See, and none. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda item C-10.1-C24.1, with the exception of item C-15.2, that has been moved for discussion? Need a motion. Moved by Mr. Cummings. Second by Ms. McCall. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed five-zero. May I have a motion to approve change order number one, Amendment Work Authorization Number Forty-nine, Deductive Change Order minus fifty-nine dollars, sixty-four cents to construct a security fencing system at Lake Ware High School? Moved by Mr. Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. Thrower. Do we have any discussion? See, and none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion passed five-zero. All right, Mr. Cummings, I am handing you the gavel.
May I have a motion to approve item C-15.2, outside counsel agreement with Attorney Mark Levitt of Allen, Norton, and Blue P.A. to provide legal services for twelve months? May I have a motion? Motion by Ms. McCall? Need a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Thrower, ready for discussion.
Did you say the second half as well, Mr. Cummings? The second piece as well?
Oh, Ms. King, I understand you pulled item C-15.2, outside counsel agreement with Attorney Mark Levitt of Allen, Norton, and Blue P.A. to provide legal services. Twelve months, you wish to have further discussion?
I do. I did pull this item from the agenda tonight. I know we did speak about this a few weeks ago. But I wanted to make sure that you guys had all the complete information of why I will be voting no tonight. If you look at our hourly rate, our attorneys are one-seventy-five. Our associates are one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Our paralegals are sixty-five dollars, except for the exception of Mr. Gonzalez. His is ninety. What is being asked of us tonight is to ask to pay two-hundred-and-sixty dollars an hour for the specialized attorney. His associate's attorneys will also be two-hundred-and-sixty dollars. And the paralegal is ninety-five dollars. If we approve this tonight, we are going over what the Attorney General has basically stated and approved, the amount that should be paid. I think that we should stay within our limits that we've had in the past. I don't feel that we are asking anything of the Superintendent that we are not doing for ourselves. Again, if you look, we're staying in the one-hundred-and-seventy-five dollar range, with the exception of the Superintendent's attorney. So, I will be voting no on this tonight. And I wanted you guys to make sure that you are informed as you vote. You have to.
I agree. I do agree. This item has concerned me, and I don't know how we can, we've had attorneys that have worked with us for a nice, long time. And there are recommendations at the state level for the amount that we do pay an attorney. And this far exceeds that amount. And I don't see why we would make exceptions for one attorney when we aren't making exceptions for the other attorneys. The other attorneys, we're keeping within the range that they're supposed to be. And not only does this gentleman do work for the Superintendent, but also the firm does other things for us. But that hourly wage is just out of line for what I believe this district can afford. And what I believe this district is actually legal for us to be doing. So, I also will be joining and voting no.
I have a couple of questions, being new to the board. Is Attorney Levitt on annual contract?
Yes.
Okay, and how long has he worked for us?
I'd have to look back prior to me. He's been here a long time.
Okay, and.
Has he as my attorney?
No, no, I meant for the District in General. So, and how much is he making now per hour?
Two-fifty.
Two-fifty?
So, he's already over.
Already over. We discussed that last year.
Right, so I guess what I'm wondering is, is that if all of these other attorneys have been making comparatively less, and he's been making more for a while, right?
That's my understanding. Since I've been here, he's been two-fifty.
So.
We didn't catch it, to tell you the truth. We didn't really understand the legalities of the state setting ranges and that sort of thing. Even when our board attorney was with us for many, many years, you know, she stayed within the range, I don't even know how many years she was with us, probably twenty years, Ms. Morrison was with us, and she stayed within her range. And I don't really know how this happened. I think that some of these contracts, as board members, just unless it's pointed out to us, some of these things, I mean, I'm not just born knowing all the recommendations of the auditors and how much salary should be and that sort of thing, until I start investigating it. And then I find out that we've been doing something that we shouldn't have been doing for a while now.
But this was a discussion item. There was great discussion on it. And in fact, when we talked about it at the work session, and Mr. Gibbs brought it up, he even prefaced it, saying that there was great discussion last time. So, this was very transparent.
And I was opposed to it last time.
So, my question is, we have discussed looking at bringing in another staff attorney that would take the place of Levitt's firm for the Superintendent. Is that correct?
That was at the work session, yes.
At the work session, we have discussed that. And we came to consensus that we would like to look into that. I don't know how we go backwards in paying less than what we've been paying him.
I know, that's not what's suggested. I mean, it's currently two-fifty. I'm voting no. I'm not gonna go up in increasing in pay. And I do think I know how it did get passed through, because the specialized attorney's fees is up to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, correct?
He did, the labor and employment does not qualify for the AG's recommended specialized attorney section.
Okay, that was gonna be my next question. Does he do specialized work? And if so, does that put him at a different pay grade? And for the work that we need him to do, are we quibbling over ten dollars an hour? Because I feel like that's what I'm hearing.
What's the AG's recommendation for specialized?
I believe it's around two-sixty. I'd have to double-check again on what the specialized. His field is not listed as one of the specialized.
His field is not.
No, it is not recognized as one of the specialized fields.
So, he's currently at two-sixty per hour, he and his associates?
Yes.
And his paralegals are?
He's at two-fifty. He's asking for two-sixty.
Yeah, he's asking for two-sixty, yeah.
Okay, so he and his associates are asking for an increase, correct?
Of ten dollars.
As well as his paralegals?
And the AG's recommended rate is two-hundred.
Okay.
Okay. I also want to point out, in the past, if you look at the paper provided, the Allen, Norton, and Blue, starting as early as in twenty-fourteen and twenty-fifteen, we were paying thirty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. Last year, we paid a hundred-and-eight thousand dollars, a hundred-and-eight and six-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. This year, we've already paid ninety-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-nine dollars. And we haven't even ended the fiscal year. So, as ten dollars may not sound significant, we're setting precedent for in the future. And as a board member, when I look at this, I do see where we have been incurring attorney fees in the past few years. So, I believe we have very good and capable attorneys. I think we just need to search, or Dr. Mayor can search and find the best fit. But I think we need to do due diligence with our tax dollars and spend them wisely.
Well, and let's, I'll start the discussion that we had at the work session again. But you'll recall that I did bring a lawyer. I did have a recommendation for one, and that was turned down. And so, that's why it defaulted to Mr. Levitt, because we didn't have time to scramble and get another one. I was told that that other one was too costly. In the last, well, over a year, I have worked very hard to settle, instead of it reaching your plate. You'll see, I had Ms. Wright do some research on the costs. And the increased cost that we recently saw was for that big case that you all just heard, that encouraged you to then make a decision to go to DOA with future hearings. And, you know, knowing that in itself will be about seventy thousand dollars in the budget. I, you know, I understand your concern about costs. But moving forward, I will continue to try to settle. The details of the last case prove that I tried everything before it reached your plate. And I think that with that, and again, I will say, this is a very sensitive time to make a change such as this. And I would ask that that be part of the consideration, too, as you move forward.
Does each Superintendent select their own attorney? Is that why, I mean, how does that typically work?
They can. It really up to how the board wants to do it. Mark Levitt was already under contract, so I think he was the labor and employment attorney under contract. So, he kind of defaulted into the position, because he was already there, but.
I see, I see. And board, I am, I continue to be ambivalent about going with DOA. I know other counties do that. But just hearing seventy thousand dollars, we're already getting paid to do the work. The people that are bringing things to us are getting paid to do the work. That's seventy thousand dollars. And we're talking about a ten-dollar-an-hour raise for somebody that's only on contract for a year. So, you know, I hear what you're saying, Ms. King, and we need to be mindful of every penny. But we've got a lot going on. And I think it's very important at this point to have an attorney with us that knows our history. We're moving into unprecedented times. And then if we want to change, then we can. And I love the idea that you brought up of having a staff attorney do this. I think that's something to truly consider going forward. So, that's where I am.
How did we get to this high rate for that particular attorney, with bargaining and everything? How did we get there? Like, it was just a gradual climb?
I don't know how long he's been at two-fifty. I mean, it was before I got here. So, I mean, the board had approved that over the years. I would have to go back and try and pull where the board went.
That argument from two, like, two-forty to two-fifty, or something like that, like, in the last.
I think he's been two-fifty since I've been here, or it was at least my first year, if he was up to two-fifty. I don't honestly remember.
I don't even know how, but we have, we have other attorneys, though, that are with us that we don't, I mean, the, we're, we have guidelines that we should be following at the state level. And I don't even know how we, where we decided not to follow those guidelines to get to where we're at right now.
The AG just makes recommendations, they're not binding on us, so you guys can contract.
Has that been a longtime recommendation?
Well, it was in the nineties, it was at one-seventy-five. That's where we are currently. You guys didn't update, I think it was two thousand and four or two thousand and eight, when they updated their rates to two-hundred. And the board never adjusted theirs. So, I mean, you don't have to follow the AG's recommended. Those are just their recommended, so you know where the.
We stayed below the AG's recommendation.
Right, you stayed.
Except on this, is this the only attorney besides specialized attorney?
The only one I currently have of anybody under contract, he's the only one that's over one-seventy-five.
Okay. Everybody good with this discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I.
Because I feel like this, we have to be fiscally responsible. And he is way over. He's actually ninety-five dollars over all the other attorneys. And I know it seems like a minor amount, ten dollars.
No, it all counts.
But everything counts. And we have to deal with school security coming up with money for those things and other issues within our district. We have to be good stewards of every dollar, of every dollar. And if he's doing the job at two-fifty, I don't think ten dollars is gonna stop him from not doing the job that he's already doing. So, I don't think I'll be voting for that either.
There's that. There's that, he may decide to stay at two-fifty. But if he doesn't, then, again, being new, what's the process for, would we need to hire someone separately to replace him? Or can someone else on this list that we're already using pick up what he's doing at a hundred-and-seventy-five dollars an hour?
Since he'll be my attorney, I would have to find one myself.
I suspect he'll stay. I mean, I would be surprised if he didn't. I mean, he's the highest-paid attorney in the district for us, so. I wouldn't want.
I'm willing to keep him at two-fifty. I mean, I don't want, I don't want, I don't want, at this stage, right now, where we are, and we have this year, where we're on a Superintendent surge, I don't want to switch attorneys in the middle of this. So, but I'm also willing, I think, two-fifty, when we look at everything else. I mean, he's making more than.
Anybody.
Than anybody.
And when you look at, we're already at ninety-two thousand dollars. We haven't got to the fiscal year. And it doubled from two thousand and sixteen, seventeen to two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, what we spent from fifty-one thousand to a hundred-and-eight thousand.
And that's because he travels from Orlando. And again, a little history there is that the attorney that I brought forward was denied. I think, I think the only vote that night I have is Ms. McCall's vote for a local attorney. So, because of the time crunch and having Mr. Levitt on, already on staff, we, I just picked him, just picked him up, because we were in a time crunch. So, that's how that happened. So, again, that's kind of the pattern with not approving attorneys for me.
I just feel like it's just the cost. I mean, Mr. Tomlin, we paid his attorney within the range that was the allowable range. And Mr. Yancy before that, I'm not understanding why, when you came, you could not find an attorney within that range when all the previous superintendents had before you. And the board, you know, the board has decisions, they have guidelines they have to live within. And so, we're still paying him more than we would pay anybody else that came along.
So, to be clear, we're saying that we would be willing to pay him two-fifty? And do we have any?
To stay, to stay.
The only issue before the board is two-sixty. So, if you were, if you vote that, your contract is done, we'll have to go back and he'll have to bring a contract that's for two-fifty to the board, to remain even, so.
Okay, so if we vote.
Yeah, the only issue is to increase his pay to two-sixty.
But today, it's a no.
If you vote, if the vote is no, then his contract's not approved. So, yeah, he'll have to go, we'll have to go back to him and say, "The board did not approve your rate increase." And if he's willing to stay at two-fifty, if he's not, his contract is expiring at the end of June. So, we'll have that time that the Superintendent would have to. That would take one-seventy-five an hour and transition the cases over to the new attorney.
That's the only sticky point I'm a little worried about.
Yeah, I'm concerned about that myself.
Because that's gonna end up costing a lot of money.
Are you ready to vote?
Find another attorney for a year?
I'm not worried about it.
Ready to vote?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch, I didn't catch that. What, you're not worried about it? Mrs. Stacy?
About finding another attorney. I'm not worried about finding another attorney. I think you'll find another attorney, if he doesn't.
All right, let's move forward. All in favor?
My last one was denied, so.
All in favor of the the increase of ten dollars to two-sixty, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, by the same side?
Aye.
Aye.
For two, one-four. I turn the gavel back over to Ms. King.
Give me back the gavel. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of seventeen thousand, twenty-seven dollars, fifty cents? One thousand dollars to Bellevue High School from Rotary Club of Bellevue; twenty-five hundred dollars to Forest High School from their business partner, St. Leo University; via Public Education Foundation of Marion County; one thousand dollars to Hillcrest Public Schools from Marion Service Roofing and Sheet Metal Company; five thousand dollars to Marion Technical Institute from Century Link Clark M. Williams Foundation; two thousand five hundred, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars, fifty cents to Spar Elementary School from Peter and Mary Lou Van Note; twenty-five hundred dollars to Vanguard High School from Board of County Commissioners, State of Florida, County of Marion; twenty-five hundred dollars to Westport High School Twenty-five hundred dollars to Westport High School from their business partner, Ocala Health, Ocala Regional Medical Center via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. All right. Can I have a motion?
May.
Ms. McCall?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thrower.
I'll take it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed five-zero. Who'd I do last time? Was it you maybe? Ms. Thrower, would you like to thank everyone?
Absolutely, absolutely. It's one of the best parts of every school board meeting is thanking the, the community and individual contributors for everything that they do to support us. We seriously could not do it without you. Every contribution that you make helps our kids, helps our schools, help us get better. So, thank you so much on behalf of the whole school board.
Thank you. The next regular administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for June sixth, twenty nineteen, at nine a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss construction, project update, hurricane briefing, emergency management, health insurance update, MTI three-point-zero, and police designation update. The next regular administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for June twentieth, twenty nineteen, at nine a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss school planning update and twenty-twenty health insurance. And we will move forward with our comments and concerns. And Dr. Mayer, we will begin with you.
Awesome, okay. Officer Woods, thanks for being here tonight. So, an update on the baby. How she-
She's great.
So, you, yeah, so you said nine months now? Okay. And you're reading to her every night? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Walking it? No.
You're like, no, not yet, please. Okay, awesome. Well, thanks again for being here. And again, we appreciate everything that you and the OPD and the Sheriff's Department do for us, so thank you very much. A week or so ago, we had a great visit from the DOE Chancellor. Chancellor Oliva was here, and he brought with him Deputy Chancellor of Innovation, Dr. Hall, and they came and we had a great visit at Evergreen Elementary. And they said that they would be back for some more visits. Dr. Hall has some ties to Marion County, so it was, it was nice to have a chat with him about that as well. Let me see. Graduations, I'm sure that some of you will touch on that as well, but eight wonderful graduations, very busy, two weeks, and each of them were special in their own way. Each had something special about them. But at the Lake Weir graduation, what, what a tremendous surprise when we were able to surprise a young lady, a young graduate with her sister who was back from overseas in the military. And that was a great surprise to everybody there that night. That was a very special night. And again, each graduation was, was just touching in its own way. So, what an honor to celebrate the special moments with all of our graduates. I wanted to make sure that, especially with tonight, with the presentation from Community Bank for the twenty thousand dollars for our homeless students, that the public knows, and I mentioned this at the work session. But thanks to the efforts of Renee Senjens and our Grants Department, we will be eligible to apply for the state homeless grant, which is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And we again have to give great thanks to Ms. Senjens, who, who, I get, I get, we can say it, she poked them for a whole year, just to give us this opportunity to apply again. That's huge, and especially with the discussion on, on finances that we just had, brings it a little bit more close to home even, even now. At the master board training, and I'm sure some of you will, will mention that as well, we had a discussion about our, I'm not, what are we going to call it? I don't even know if we did. I was like chant? I didn't know how to describe it to Kevin when he put it together. But, there you go. But I'll pass this down, and if you all take the notes from what we put together about our mission. So, if you'll take a look at that and see-
Our board commitment.
Yes.
Our commitment.
Hear me roar, yes. So, if you'll take a look at that and let us know how you would like that adjusted, we're glad to do that as well. So, just let us know. And then two more, I have two more updates for you, and I have some of our awesome team members who are going to do that. First one, Mr. McGowan, if you can come on up, please, and give us an update, oh, and Ms. Beck too, please, and give us an update on third grade reading scores.
Hey, good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Madam Superintendent, Mr. Gibbs and Mrs. Martinez Lopez. Per the superintendent's request, Ms. Beck and I are here to give you a brief update on third grade FSA ELA scores. If you, you may or not, may or may not be aware, but they were released last Friday early afternoon, so our first chance to be in front of you and kind of go over that information. So, the handouts you're getting, I want to explain first, you're getting the district report of all the districts in the state and their performance last year versus this year, and also the last attachment in the packet is our, our district schools and their performance last year and this year. As a district, we did decline two percent from forty-six percent proficiency to forty-four percent. The state increased one percentage point from fifty-seven to fifty-eight percentage points. The one thing that I'll, that I will point out in regards to looking at this data is when I say declined or increased, you'll see that's from last year to this year. And I think it's just a fair point, as we've shown you data all year, is that we really need to look at cohort to cohort, because those students that performed that forty-six percent proficiency last year are now our fourth graders. So, we won't know their performance until their results come in at the end of next month. So, the third graders for this school year, essentially what we can look at is in terms of FSA assessments, that is their baseline moving forward. And again, we won't know their growth or their proficiency until this time next year. Obviously, I mean, I think it goes without saying that we would have, obviously, would like to have seen an increase, whether it be one percent or two percent, rather a decrease. But to put, I wanted to provide you some information just to kind of understand the data that we're looking at. One is that that two percentage points, when we talk about third grade students, that equates to about seventy students. So, out of three thousand five hundred and twenty-two students who took the third grade assessment, that two percent drop equates to about seventy students. And so, one of the things that, as I've shown you throughout the year with our local assessment data with QSMAs, is that it has shown us all year as a district for third grade that our proficiency was exactly where we were last year. It did not show any extreme highs or lows. Yes, when we talk about individual schools, there were some pockets of, of doing better or worse than last year in terms of proficiency, but we were the exact same place in terms of proficiency for third grade as we were last year. And so, as we've mentioned to you many times before, for, especially for our lowest performing elementary schools or our turnaround schools now, what they've said to you face to face, what our area directors have said, and I've said all along throughout the year, is that their performance on their school grade will come from growth. And keep in mind, this is not a growth measure. This is only the proficiency measure. And we know that as a district, this is an area of, that we've struggled in, and ELA proficiency takes time. It's not something that can happen overnight, but through that growth, that continual growth which we hope to see, over time, that growth will lead to proficiency. And again, we won't know any of that information until the rest of the scores come out. The only indication of growth that we have right now is from our third grade retainees. So, I did look up that information and wanted to share it with you. So, our third grade students who took the test this year, those that were retained from the prior year, again, they're taking the third grade assessment now for the second time. And of those students, sixty-six percent of them made a learning gain. And that is an increase of fifty-three percent the prior year. So, while that is a very small sample size, and I will not stand here before you and say that that's guaranteed to occur with our fourth and fifth grade, but that is a good, a very positive sign of, of the growth that we've been looking for. So, out of, again, two, almost three hundred students, sixty-six percent of them made a learning gain over fifty-three percent from last year. So, again, at the end of June, the last week of June is when we expect the rest of the test results. The one thing I'll say about third grade, and I'm sure you realize this, is that the reason they're released now and they're released by themselves is for promotion or retention purposes for third grade students, because that information has to get out to parents in a timely manner. So, obviously, they grab the attention. But what I urge you not to do and caution you is to not look at that as a barometer of all the other test scores, because in terms of an elementary school grade, what you have before you accounts for less than five percent of an elementary school grade. It is one-third of the seven components. So, while it is important, and I'm not negating that, and again, I'm not negating that, that we declined, because that is the, the data, and there's nothing that, that we can say to deny that. But again, it's nothing that we didn't expect in terms of our proficiency QSMA data all year, and it will rely, as we thought all along, on our growth. And again, the only indication we have of growth, although a small sample size is positive, so we're hopeful that at the end of June, when the rest of the scores are released, we'll see that same trend continue. The, the final, the point I'll mention is that while three, thirty-five hundred students took the assessment and got a score, not all of those students will be calculated in the school grade. Because to be included in the school grade, you have to be enrolled in that school all year. So, there are numerous students that, at each individual school site, that while they took the test because they were enrolled in April of May, may not have been there all year. And so, that will make numbers fluctuate as school grade comes out. And when we talk about school grade specifically, as you know, that proficiency is a combination of all third, fourth, and fifth grade, not just one grade level. So, I just wanted to present that to you. Again, you have district and school results. The remaining results will come at the end of June, but I'm here to, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. McGowan, that last time I asked, our mobility rate was around thirty-five percent. Is that still about what it is, would you know?
I, I-
Or is that a Mr. Ayers question?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I think what concerns me the most is our Level Ones. I looked at the state collection of level, you know, at the other districts with the Level Ones at the third grade, and there's only like maybe two other districts that has more Level Ones than us. And that's just real disturbing. What concerns me about that also is, well, I'll just talk about my board concerns, because it's not really anything I can ask you a question for.
And this is just a request. There's, I think since nineteen ninety-eight, it's changed about sixteen times, these calculations. And I'm at the point where I'm not even sure anymore what all, I think it's approximately nineteen separate categories, is that correct?
For, you're referring to school grades?
Yes.
So, for elementary school, there's seven components.
Okay.
But within each of those components, there's multiple grade levels that make up that component. So, for example, ELA, for proficiency, that's a number of students, level three and above. It's third, fourth, and fifth grade combined, whereas what's presented to you here is just third grade.
Okay.
So, that is one-third of one, one of the seven components.
Okay. I think it would really be helpful, speaking for myself, at some point to have it included in a work session, what all these components are, what the nineteen cells are, and just to get a better grip on the whole big picture.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I agree, because sometimes numbers can be-
Very deceiving.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and I've said that since I've been on the board, that sometimes I see one set of numbers that's saying one thing, and then I see another set of numbers that's saying something different. I need to see the set of numbers that count. I need to see what's going to make sense and not get to the end of the year and, and a surprise set of numbers. This, this is what we're, this what we're looking at is, is enlightening. It is enlightening what these numbers are.
When it comes to Evergreen, I'll say it's disheartening. You know, all year, we were led to believe that there's just going to be in gains.
Okay. Well, I'm going to put in my two cents, because when we look at the numbers and, Mr. Cummins, you said the numbers that count, in the world, educational world that we live in, these are the numbers that count. And we're going backwards, if you look at these numbers from last year to this year. We talked about mobility. I know that this leadership team actively took ESC students and removed them from their home schools and put them in other schools, you know? So, if we're talking about mobility and stuff like that, as leadership in a district, we shouldn't be moving students in the middle of the year, any students, period. So, it, to me, this is-
Students haven't been served their living forever.
To me, these numbers are disheartening, and it concerns me greatly to see where we're going as a district. I'm not putting blame on you, Mr. McGowan, you, Ms. Beck, there's no blame, there is no blame on our teachers, because I know they're doing the best that they have been given in what they're doing, whether it be their books or what they're told to do today or tomorrow. But what I do know is that we have a district that is failing. There was only, what, four districts below us in third grade? I'm a third grade master teacher, you know? I, I'm like, it's hard for me to see when only forty-four percent of our students are proficient. So, I think we need to figure out what it is and deal with it and, and find the issues and take care of it. But this, making, everything's going to be okay and putting salve on it and, and having excuses, that's not fixing it. We need to figure out how to fix this, find the problems, and move forward. But this is the reality.
It is the reality, and, and that's a, that's a very good point. And your point about finding the problem and fixing it instead of just band-aiding it or solving it is, is another great point, and that's exactly what we did. We know that this group of third grade students, this is the first year that they have had solid, hard, Ms. Beck, jump in, phonics instruction since Wonders, since, how long, and how long did we have Wonders? Just years. So, we knew we had a reading problem. We knew we had one last year when we dipped. And even before those scores came out, we were proactive with bringing in this reading curriculum that we know is working. Let's go back to, I think, the last data presentation where, and I think even Mrs. Stacy, you said about kindergarten, and look how high kindergarten is. And we've had testimonials from our kindergarten teachers who say that not only are these kids decoding more proficiently than they ever have, in fact, in December, they were, these kindergarten kids were able to manipulate medial vowels, which is unheard of, but their comprehension in their vocabulary is beyond what we have seen in recent memory. So, what we have put in place is working. So, now, it will take some time for those kindergartners to get to third grade, we know that. But when we go back and we look at these retainees and the growth that they made last year when it was fifty-three percent, and this year it's sixty-six, when we look at how the data we've been sharing with you all year is just like what the state gave us back, that gives us even more confidence that the data that we have been collecting on our growth with fourth and fifth is going to mirror, is going to come through with state data. And that is, is what is simply amazing, because again, you're right, Mrs. King, what these teachers have had to work with has not been acceptable, and that's why we made this change. And so, to expect this year's third grade teachers to, to get to proficiency when these, these youngsters were coming in from an environment where they hadn't had solid reading instruction, I think they did a great job. And when we look at fourth and fifth, and the gains that we're making in fourth and fifth, kudos, kudos to them.
So, I will just chime in and say that as the Director of Elementary Ed, I take these scores very seriously. It's really kind of our gauge point as well. We certainly are going to be responsive to the data as it is coming in from third, fourth, and fifth grade. I agree where we're going to show some movement this year is going to be on our learning gains. I also agree with Dr. [inaudible]. Building a strong foundation, which we won't reap some of those benefits for a couple of years. We did have Wonders. Wonders had its benefits, but one of the biggest downfalls of that program was the fact that it did not have a solid phonics program. So, that left schools with purchasing some ancillary materials throughout the years. We are seeing excellent success with our CKLA skills portion as it is building that foundational knowledge. In addition to that, I have really begun already to talk to my team this year, and I'll be talking to the administrators as they come in for trainings throughout the summer. We are going to really, we have always very closely monitored our third grade retainees and those that are promoted for cause, but we are really going to ramp up our processes in our department to make sure that we are doing all that we can do to get a learning gain out of those students, because they truly are the only group of third graders that we get a gain from. We'll get proficiency from all of them, but only a retained third grader can we get a gain. And it's really imperative that we get as many gains from those students as we can, because they have yet had a second year in third grade. And so, that's going to be already one of the plans that I have kind of thought through this weekend.
Did, did the retainees, did they use the CKLA program, or did they use other curriculum? Or other, what did they? Or other, what did they use?
So for our retained students, so I would say that we had CKLA in play at all of our elementary schools. So if you were to ask me on the continuum, you know, that really was school-dependent. We had some schools that were really working to infuse CKLA skills and knowledge across the board. We have some that are really getting there. We have some that are well on their way, and they have others that we are working with to really make sure that we can highlight and showcase the benefits of this program. In addition to that, where there is a shortcoming, because again, any program has its shortcoming, as a department, we have to address that. And that's what we're working to do this summer. We have lots of teacher groups coming in this summer for a variety of reasons to assist the elementary ed department.
So the retained students from last year did use the CKLA program this year?
I would say all of them had access to CKLA, all of their teachers.
But where they, is that what they were using?
The expectation was, is that their classroom teacher was using it, yes.
And then foundations too, don't they use that as a tier two?
So absolutely, that was in play as one of our resources at a tier two or tier three level, absolutely. As well as we had some other foundational programs that were in play to help close that gap.
How many students were retained that we were talking about from last year?
Um, I'd have to, you got it?
Um, a total of two-hundred-and-ninety-seven.
Two-hundred-and-ninety-seven?
Yes, sir.
How many have been retained this year?
So that, we are still finalizing, and I'll tell you the reason we are finalizing those numbers, is because some of those students will be promoted for good cause. There is a variety of ways that students can be promoted for good cause. That is outlined in state statute. With the final way that a student can promote, if all other avenues have been exhausted, is that they will participate in summer school. Summer school's gearing up in a week. At the conclusion of summer school, Mr. McGowan's department will work with our folks to administer the SAT-ten assessment. These students have already been given that assessment one time, and if they can meet the established cut score, then they will be promoted to fourth grade. So at the end of the summer is where we'll have the final, final numbers. And actually, I've already been sitting today and looking through packets that have been coming in on ways that students are being promoted. An example would be a student with an exceptionality, an ESC exceptionality, that has already been retained one time, they can be promoted for cause. A student where FSA is not the appropriate choice of assessment, they can be promoted for cause. All those are outlined in state statute.
If they're promoted for cause, that mean we're putting them in a fourth grade with the potential of failing, fourth grade?
Well, so one of the things that we really have to work on is, and will continue to work on, is you're exactly correct Reverend Cummings, is how are we supporting those students? And I know in a presentation I did earlier this year, it was whether students are retained or whether they're promoted, it's really what are we doing with them the next year? And that's conversations that I've already been having with our administrators and those, as we've been talking about some of our primary students, what are we doing differently with them? What resources are we providing? What PD are we providing? What support are we providing to make sure that these students are getting growth? And I think, again, that's one of the new parameters I'm going to put in place, is at the end of the first nine weeks, I'm going to meet with every administrator, working with our area directors to make sure that we're checking in on these students and what growth are they making? What does their QSMA data look like? What does their I-ready data look like? What does their attendance look like? Their discipline track record look like? Because if something's out of alignment, we've got time to fix that, so.
Because my concern is if they make the cut, they barely make the cut, at the end of summer, we put them in the fourth grade, that kid is really still behind. So they're, they're, so when school starts in August, these other kids are at a different pace and moving on a different pace, so these kids are never actually caught up. They're just being pacified.
Well, what I will say though, is that they've had to demonstrate a level of proficiency to be able to promote for cause. So whether that is through our portfolio process, whether that's through our SAT-ten assessment, they are definitely having, having to show a level of proficiency.
Do you have a lot of kids on the portfolio?
Um, I'll, I will definitely, I can bring you those numbers those, this summer. I'd rather give you hard numbers connected to that, but I can certainly do that if you would like that. I can actually give you a distribution of all of our students and the ways, if they promoted for cause, the way in which they promoted for cause by percentage.
Could you give us that breakdown based on school?
Yep, absolutely. Yep, we can do that.
Now, do we do social promotion, Ms. Beck?
No, we do not.
What's social promotion?
So that would be promoting because, um, you know, they are, they've been in, you know, they're big for their age, or because, um, you know, they-
They've been there too long.
We feel, right, we, we want to make sure, oh, there's, I mean, a perfect example would be they're not little, they're, they're older, and their grade level, we've just got to get them up to the next grade level. Doesn't matter whether they're on grade level or not, and that is not what we want to do. In actuality, I, I will tell you, I've been meeting with administrators for the past week. I take all that very seriously, because at the end of the day, you're advocating for those children one way or the other, and you're, you're determining their future. So if you are retaining, it's making sure that you have the best pathway set up for them, and if you are choosing not to, then still, what happens differently with those kids? I will say, in the last week, as I've met with administrators, one of the things that I have seen, just because I've met with all these, and so these packets now, I've seen enough of them, that I can see for some of these students, attendance is a clear issue that we're going to need to work on, because students that are behind academically, students that are being brought forward at K-two for retention, at third grade, there, it's an attend, I mean, there's other factors as well, but I'm gonna tell you, attendance is jumping out at me like crazy. And I've been talking to administrators about what is your school-based tier-one attendance plan? What are you doing beyond that when that's not working? What are we doing targeted for those students? So I just say that to you, because when you look at enough of them, trends start to jump out at you.
So, um, you know, I'm concerned that only eleven counties, including us, where one of those eleven do not have proficiency in third grade. I did say, I think it was last year, maybe the beginning of this year, that I really think we need to really watch those kindergarteners, because I do think that with what's going on in kindergarten, we'll be able to see that eventually more students will be proficient. I'm hoping that the learning gains are going to be there. I'm gonna be very disappointed if they're not. I was at Stanton Weersdale today at their last SAC meeting, just sat in the library, and I will tell you that two kindergarten teachers that were on that SAC team talked about their kindergarteners and how well they were doing in reading because of CKLA. They was not prompted by me, they brought this up, and then the fifth grade teacher said she asked her students what their favorite thing was for the whole year, and they talked about ELA and the CKLA text. And so that was, I mean, I was not involved in the conversation at all, I was there just to listen. So it is, I think, having impact, and I think when we begin to watch these kindergartners, I tell you what, when they're in third grade, if we're still having these, we definitely have a problem. But I am concerned that we just can't seem to get over the hump with proficiency. So I'm hoping that those learning gains are gonna make a difference. I tell you what I'm really impressed with is Reddick Collier.
Yeah.
Very impressed by Reddick Collier, the fact that they were an F, and they went from a thirty-three and seventeen, eighteen to forty-five this year of their third graders being proficient. So something's going right there. So, um, anyway, I just, I'm concerned, um-
And I don't disagree with you, again, I mean, there's no one, I mean, when those scores come in, I mean, it's important to me. I take that as a reflection on our department and all the work that we are doing. And so we want to make sure that we're being responsive. There are some things already that we are going to do differently with CKLA, and we are involving teachers in that process. We have done that all throughout the year. Again, they're being brought in this summer, we're moving some things around based upon their recommendations to make it much more user-friendly for them. We're also creating some additional resources for them. And we've been very transparent with Amplify the Company that we're doing that. I mean, I'm not going to go behind the scenes and do something, but I'm gonna be very clear about what we feel like will work better in our district based upon the feedback that we're getting from teachers that are really working hard to implement and to be strong users of this program. And we will continue, not just with that program, but with anything connected with reading, and as far as that goes, math, science, social studies. I mean, we have a responsibility to make sure that we're responding to whatever the data is, to make sure that we are helping our teachers and our administrators as they're working with our teachers.
So another one of my questions, some of these counties who are proficient and are going up, are they doing all the assessments that we're doing? Are, do we know, are they doing all the QSMA's? Are they doing, I, I, I'm still concerned, and I know that the QSMA's are not supposed to be for a grade, but these kids, they feel a lot of pressure, and I know the teachers do too. I just wonder if we're just overtaxing with assessments? Is that what, is that part of what this is? Is that our kids are just tired of testing?
I mean, I can't speak, obviously, for every district. I know my counterparts in other districts, I have had conversations, and they have something very similar, especially some of our local districts around us. I have had conversations, and of course, they don't call them by the same name, but they do have some type of interim quarterly assessment that are written the same way that we write them, that are tied to the standard, written to the item spec provided by the state as kind of a mirror of what the students will see. You know, one thing I'll mention about the QSMA's, and Reverend Cummings, to your point regarding, you know, you want to make sure that the numbers you're looking at are what's gonna occur, and I can tell you, except for maybe a couple of schools, this was not a, this proficiency was not a surprise. Every school that had a positive uptick in their QSMA data performed better on these FSA scores, and vice versa. Those that had or were, had a decline in QSMA, we saw that. And as a district, like I mentioned before, we earn the, with proficiency for third grade only, we're in the same position than where we were last year. So throughout the year, you know, never did we expect for proficiency to be higher low. It was pretty much consistent, and that bears out with our FSA scores, because really, besides seventy students, which is two percent, we are pretty much where we were last year. But where we are seeing it is in the gains. And again, there is, you know, while the one indicator we have from fifty-three to sixty-six, that's encouraging, but that is a very small sample size. That's a couple hundred students, whereas when the rest of the learning gains come out, we're talking all of fourth and fifth grade, we're talking seven thousand students. So that's, we'll just have to see where that comes from. But, but what I can say is that, and we're gonna do analysis over the summer, just like we did last year, but from all indications, the QSMA data is a relevant tool letting us know that are the students learning the standards, so.
And if we reduce the number of assessments that we used to do, because it seemed like for a while, it was just insane, that the kids were getting assessed.
We did reduce it for this year, but I don't know.
And that's what I was gonna ask, Ms. Beck, when your groups come in the summer, are, are you guys gonna look at that again to see what we can, if we can thin that out any, anymore? I mean, because percentage-wise, you had said that we do three percent of our year testing.
Our highest grade level, I believe, is three percent. Statute requires that you cannot go over five percent of, of the minutes of a student has testing above five percent, we're nowhere close to that. Grade level is three percent, and that includes local and state testing combined. We have, we are making adjustments to our assessment plan next year. We'll all certainly share with you when, when we're done editing that, but we have made even more revisions to, in terms, for example, I-ready, cutting some of that out. And so we, we are sensitive to that, and we want to make sure that it's, that it's not overbearing, but at the same time, we are required by statute to monitor student progress towards the standards.
Sure.
And so it's a fine line between that, you know, doing what we have to do so that we're not totally blind by what we're going to see-
Exactly.
And, and overtesting.
Well, with, with the I-ready, are, are these other districts that I'm looking at that are performing, are they using I-ready? Are we using the right, right assessment tool?
Lots of the, lots of Florida districts are using I-ready. I mean, I could get you the actual percentage, but I would say-
Specifically the ones that are moving the numbers?
Miami-Dade is a, is a huge example. They definitely use I-ready, because I have heard them at user summits. I know some of the surrounding districts, I think Levy County is using I-ready, so there are so, many, many. I would say more are using I-ready than not. Mr. McGowan is correct, per state statute, especially in the area of reading tied to our K-12 reading plan, we are required to have a diagnostic assessment that we routinely give to students so that we can be monitoring reading progress. The other thing I would tell you is it connects to assessment, and, and we have offered our teachers something very optional this year through our department, and they are tied to individual standards, and that is a standards checkpoint. They can use it how they want to in their class, or they don't have to use it at all. But we have gotten huge feedback from those standards checks, that that was another way for teachers, either in a whole group setting, small group, or individual, to check in. So we have to be cautious when we say we don't want more assessment, we don't want more check-in points. We also have to know, that's how we know when we've got to come back and intervene. A perfect example would be after QSMA III, when we could see that there was some standards coming out of there that our students were not doing well on. We, as a department, can respond to that by giving reteach lessons that we can push out to third, fourth, or fifth grade teachers. So there's really multiple ways that our departments can work together, again, to try to close down those gaps as quick as we can. So on those standard checks, yes, teachers are coming in all summer long to work on those with us, so.
Ms. Beck, can you do me a favor? And, and you can just help me with this. I'm curious to know what, what Bradford County is using. They, they went from forty-seven to fifty-nine. That's a huge jump, and I'm curious if they're using I-ready as well.
Okay, I can find that out for you.
And I'm looking at some other ones. Miami-Dade actually went down in theirs, if they're using I-ready. And if we're using the wrong stuff, then we can't suspect it's be successful if we got the wrong stuff.
I definitely can get you that information.
Thank you.
Well, before you leave, I'm just gonna come to the teacher's defense again, because everything we heard today is nothing new. We have been talking about the QSMA's testing, the teachers came before us. Teacher of the Year came before us last year and said, "We are testing our students too much, I want to teach them." We have a CKLA program, the teachers from the get-go have said, "This isn't working, it's not working." And now they're quiet. I think they were just doing what they're told to do. The I-ready testing, again, is testing. So again, if, I really hope that you guys listen to the teachers. We can paint anything rosy we want, we can say how wonderful things are, but again, the numbers don't lie. We've been declining. As terrible as Wonders may be, our scores were higher then than what they are now. So something has gone awry, and I look forward to a leadership team that will listen to teachers. And Ms. Beck, I know you know exactly what you're doing. So if anyone can listen and do right by our students and our teachers, this board would be very appreciative.
I'd like to say one more thing to Ms. Beck, I haven't had my comments to her. I have spoken to some teachers that have contacted me over the weekend, and they're looking at their own classrooms, and what they're seeing is that, actually, the I-ready is tagging them right where they, where these kids were, but the QSMA is not. It is not, it is off. You know, I, the teachers, I have not talked to a single teacher that, when she was comparing her I-ready and her, what bit of QMS, QSMA stuff she could get, she could only, I remember they said they could only get it like for just their, their school or something, they couldn't see how it was district-wide or anything, but she could see for her own kids, QSMA was no help for her. The I-ready was help, it did tag her kids, just like what they, looks like about what they came in performing at, but she said that there was no rhyme or reason on the QSMA, she just said she couldn't see a connection at all, so.
And I would probably let Mr. McGowan respond to some of that, although that is a joint collaborative effort between my department on the curriculum writing end of that, as well as his department putting that together. I think one of the things before I have Mr. McGowan come up, that I would say, Mrs. Kelly, I want you to know, and I want the board to know as well, that we do take teacher feedback very seriously. I mean, they're the pulse of the classroom. They're the ones that when the door shuts in the morning, and they're the last ones in the afternoon when the door closes behind them, they're the ones that can really give us the feedback on what's going on in the classroom, how students are performing, what their needs are, what student needs are. So one hundred percent, we want to make sure that we are responding to their needs, because really, the way I look at it is, is that when we can make their life easier, then they can do the hard stuff in the classroom, and that's really edge- do the hard stuff in the classroom, and that's really edge of the students. So that really is a mission of our department, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McGowan to respond to QSMA.
Yes, Stacey, yes ma'am. And, you know, one of the things I'll, I'll say about the QSMA, specifically in regards to FSA and with I Ready, is they're really, you're looking at two different scales. And so, what teachers see when they look on our Performance Matters Dashboard with QSMA results is that is a raw score. So if it says 51, that means that that student earned 51% of the questions right. They got a 51. And again, and this is part of our training with teachers that we began last summer, and that's, that's a teaching piece, because one of the things that occurs with, and my favorite example that I'll give you is Algebra I. What, what, how the FSA is scored is they, they take that percent correct, the raw score, and then they scale it. They put it on a bell curve. So my example that I'll use is Algebra I. So not this school year, because we don't have the results, but last school year, to be proficient on the Algebra I in the course exam, you only had to answer 29% of the questions right. You got a 29, and you were Level 3, because they take that 29, they bell curve it out, Level 3 is a 29. So if we were to scale it, the QSMA's like the FSA, then I think it would be more relatable. And we've had that discussion, and I think that, to, to your point and Ms. King's point, we began that process with teachers last year, and we're going to do it in June as well. Every week in the month of June, we have teachers coming in who, who volunteered, repaying them stipends that come in, and they're going to help us review and write every QSMA question. And I can tell you, some of the good conversations we've had from teachers from last year is that once they, they read the standard, they read the item spec, and then they read the question, I mean, I've had teachers tell me, "All right, I thought this was a bad test, but now that I see it, there's nothing wrong with the questions. My students just missed it." And so, now I'm not saying that's the case on everything. I'm not saying there's not room for improvement, but-
The, the mean score stuff and all that, I mean, I can see how that could, because it, what they're looking at-
It's not easily relatable.
It's not, they couldn't compare it, and so that's the reason it didn't fit.
Right. Well, and what our analysis showed us last year is we compared every single QSMA to their FSA in the same grade level and subject. And what it told us is, as a district, that it was very comparable, within two or three points, plus or minus, is that if you performed at this point on the QSMA, this is where you were going to score out on the FSA. And so, we need a couple more years of that data to use it more as a predictive measure rather than a reactive measure of something to look at. So we're going to do that analysis this year, but our feeling is, because we've begun to do that with third grade already, and what we've seen so far is it's exactly on point, just like it was last year, that if a student is performing at this point on the QSMA, then they'll perform at this point. And I know that's hard for, for, for schools and, and, you know, to put that into practice, because how do I take that and then apply it? Because, okay, this is using last year's data, so how do I know that if I perform here, what will the result be at the end of this year? And that's why it takes a few years of data to compile, to be able to say, "Okay, now I know exactly, if I'm here, this is where I'll be at the end."
What, what grade was she teaching, Nancy, so we can, Mr. McGowan can take that back to the team and dig a little deeper on that grade level?
I'm not going to give away any information, just you help me. I'll take that information back.
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the second group that's going to come up is in response to the request Thursday at the Work Session, where we were discussing the Walk Zone for Dr. N.H. Jones. And at the time, it was mentioned about bringing information back. Ms. King and I both looked at each other at the same time and said, "Ooh, that would be late in June, so that would be too late." So I said that we would be here tonight with information for you on if you wanted to forward with it this school year, as was some discussion. So when we left that meeting Thursday, we pulled the team together, they got right on it, worked over the weekend, and they would like to present this information to you this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair King, Vice Chair Reverend Cummings, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Mayor Paul Gibbs, and Ms. Martinez Lopez. And with me tonight, I do have Jennifer Beck and Stephen Ayers. After, again, as Dr. Mayor noted, after discussion of N.H. Jones from last Thursday's Board Work Session, we wanted to provide further information, as well as a proposed timeline for student transition to Dr. N.H. Jones for the 2019-2020 school year. In your PowerPoint that you have in front of you, and as well as up here, you have a copy of the map that you have seen before. Mr. Ayers has certainly presented that to you before in School Board Work Sessions, but I wanted to make sure that, for the audience, that we were showing the Attendance Zone again. This is the Attendance Zone for Dr. N.H. Jones. Point Sienna Heights is also what it's called, the area, and it's, it's kind of encompassed by the borders of State Road 40, Martin Luther King Avenue, Southwest 8th Place, and Southwest 27th Avenue. And, and as we talk through the proposed timeline and give you some information on what we would do this summer in order to be ready for the 62 students that possibly would come into Dr. N.H. Jones, we wanted to, again, give you this Attendance Zone map so that you can see that. And Mr. Ayers is going to kind of walk us through some of the student numbers that we have here.
All right, as you can see on the present, on the, in your, your handout, these are the 62 students that are currently living in that Walk Zone. And as you can see right now, this is the grade levels that they'll be for the 1920 school year and the schools that they're coming from. The kindergarten, if you'll notice, there's the two pre-K students right now. Those are the two students that are enrolled in Marion County pre-K that live in that zone. There are others that are going to other private ones that we don't have record of right now. So right now, we only have record of two kindergarten students, but historically, that number will go up to probably 12 that live in that, if we go back and extrapolate it out. And so, those aren't recorded in these numbers right now. These are just live numbers that we have. And so, that would be 12 first graders, 18 second graders, nine third graders, four, or 12 fourth graders and nine fifth graders that come in, for a total of the 62 current students. But we could probably, you know, once the, because historically, kindergartens don't register, you know, they'll register right up into open house times, but we can project out probably another 12 students.
Now, some of these students, could they be in private school? Like, we wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't capture them, or if they're in private school, you'd capture them?
No, these are students that are currently enrolled in Marion County Public Schools.
Okay, because I know, is Shiloh still there? That nice, because I know some of the children go to Shiloh.
Yes, they do.
And so, that's, those children would be, needed to be added?
No.
If they're not, if they wanted to leave Shiloh and come to N.H. Jones.
If they want to leave Shiloh, but I doubt they want to leave Shiloh.
That's a great school. I love that school.
And again, that's the unpredictability of- Mm-hmm.
That school is fantastic.
All right, so one of the things I'll draw your attention to before we turn to the next page, is that 48 of these students are currently at Shady Hill Elementary. I point that out to you because, as you see Shady Hill referenced here on the proposed timeline, it will make a little more sense, and given your feedback this evening on whether we are moving forward for the 1920 school year, this would be a recommended proposed timeline, knowing that from Thursday afternoon to now, this are, these are some of the things that we thought of. It may or may not be completely inclusive of all things, but we certainly tried to capture all of the big highlights, beginning with this evening at the School Board Meeting, and we'll be asking for your recommendations. Tomorrow morning, it's important that both N.H. Jones and Shady Hill have a faculty meeting, should your recommendation be to move forward. It is the last day that we have teachers on campus, so we would want to make sure that we are sharing information with them. Also, parent notification letters and intent forms would be mailed out, and those have been provided to Mr. Gibbs, and they're working their way around. This would be to the parents of those 60, what was it? 62 students. In order to make sure that we are communicating with those families, we believe that scheduling at least two Sky Alert messages, which is our automated system that we can utilize to record and send out, the first one being the day that they're mailed out. And one of the things that we would be saying to parents is, "We want you to look forward to the letter that will be coming to your mailbox or to your P O B, T, P O box, and that in it will be what we are proposing. It will also include a meeting date and time at N.H. Jones, and we will be encouraging for our parents to attend." Another Sky Alert would go out on June 4th. Now they have received the letter from the mailbox or the P O box, so we're reminding them, "Don't forget, parents, we have a parent meeting on June 4th, and we'd love to have you there." The parent meeting would be scheduled on Thursday, June 6th, at 6:00 PM in the N.H. Jones cafeteria. And then, right after the meeting, the week of June 10th through the 13th, Mr. Ayers Department, which is the School Choice Department, would then be making phone contact with any family that did not sign in to the informational meeting, to make sure that they have the meeting notes, and to make sure that any questions they might have are being answered. The deadline, we would be proposing to return the intent forms, would be Thursday, June 20th, and then the week of June 24th through the 27th, going back to Ayers Department, the School Choice Department, they would, again, attempt to make phone contact with any family who has not returned the intent letter. We want to make sure that all families have received notification, that they have had the ability to make the choice that best suits their family. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Keiner.
All right, the second portion of the proposed timeline encompasses more of what we would be doing behind the scenes, because at the end of June, we would have received, or we have hoped to receive by that June 20th date, all of the intent letters from our Attendance Zone families at Dr. N.H. Jones. So by then, we will have firm numbers and grade levels of students proposing to go enroll at Dr. N.H. Jones. So several things need to happen in the summertime in order to be prepared for our students that would begin in the fall, in August of 2019. We would certainly work with Employment Services to make unit adjustments as needed, based on those hard data, student data numbers that we receive back from the intent forms. This would include, could include up to three or four additional units that would be allocated to Dr. N.H. Jones, based on, again, the numbers that we would receive on the intent forms. Possible unit reductions to Shady Hill, and I bring up Shady Hill, that's the only school, really, that has the majority of the students that are in that Attendance Zone for Dr. N.H. Jones. There's a splattering, as you saw on the chart, at a few other schools, but it would not inform, it wouldn't make unit reductions there. However, we could be looking at unit reductions to Shady Hill, based on, again, the numbers that we receive in those units, those intent forms. In addition, there are nine students out of the 62, we did poll at the end of last week, that have IEPs, and as you know, the IEPs would drive us to possibly add some additional ESE units to Dr. N.H. Jones, again, pending whether or not those specific students do say that they want to come to Dr. N.H. Jones. Again, just putting that in our timeline so that we are prepared to meet all of our students' needs. At this point, we have a support facilitator that Dr. N.H. Jones shares with Madison Street, and so we would certainly need to look at increasing some of that timeframe on the unit allocation. Same timeframe, end of June, beginning of July, we would notify Transportation to have them adjust bus routes and schedules as needed. Again, the students can certainly choose to continue to attend their current school that they're enrolled in, and they would be, provide transportation. But anyone that is intending to come to Dr. N.H. Jones and is in the Point Sienna Heights walk-in zone would not need to receive the transportation. So again, we would need to adjust with Ms. Becky Rourke, we would adjust those bus routes and schedules, so that would be happening this summer as well. We would be meeting with the principals from Dr. N.H. Jones and Shady Hill, respectively, to shift classrooms on their campus as needed to accommodate those unit additions and possibly unit reductions. They would notify their teachers over the summer around that beginning of July timeframe so that they would know whether or not they need to come in and be involved in packing up their classroom. Not that we would ever make a teacher to come in over their summer, because we want all teachers to enjoy their summertime, but of course, myself having been a teacher, and I know Ms. King, you can agree to this, and you want, you really don't want other people touching your stuff, you want to kind of facilitate that. And then we would have custodial staff, of course, move it. Currently, the four classrooms that Principal Hul and I have walked at N.H. Jones that we would use, two of them do have current, not K-5 classrooms. Two of them are being used, one as part of their magnet science lab, and one as part of their STEM lab that they have on their specials rotation. So we would want to, you know, certainly move those and have the teachers involved if they wish. The N.H. Jones principal would update master schedule, as well as Shady Hill, would need to update master schedule. The schedules right now are being done, actually, this week, the schedules are being put into Skyward for next year. It's crazy timeframe, we're already ready for next year with these schedules. But certainly, we will, at the beginning of July, go in and update master schedule, including the schedules in Skyward. When you're talking about adding three or four units, that is something that you, you really have to be proactive about, and we would want to be. So we would want to spend time in, you know, how are we scheduling our classes? How are we adding the extra three to four units into the K-5 overall master schedule there at Dr. N.H. Jones? And of course, even a reduction in, even if it's one or two units at Shady Hill, we would certainly want to be strategic about, about that, and about where she maybe would move teachers to at Shady Hill. The N.H. Jones principal, Ms. Hul, would hire teachers to fill vacant classroom units as allocated. Just a side note, this may also cause existing schools to lose teachers, because as we post the unit allocations that are granted for Dr. N.H. Jones in the middle of the summer, end of June, first of July, current teachers, per their contract, are allowed to transfer into those positions, and she would interview and possibly take teachers from other schools, which of course, happens sometimes, but again, we would have some better teachers to go to Dr. N.H. Jones. So just putting that out there, that that might cause other schools to have to then find other teachers that they currently have staffed on their campuses. Teachers per contract have until mid-July to basically transfer without principal permission. So we have some of that. Then we have beginning of July as well, we will be planning for technology upgrades to select classrooms at Dr. N.H. Jones. Currently, the school administration team at Dr. N.H. Jones has worked hard as part of their technology magnet to have an engaged classroom in each of those classrooms. However, the four classrooms that we would be looking at, because they're not current classrooms K-5, they're used for special areas, we would want to certainly engage those with Smartboard technology. We also have a one-to-one initiative with Chromebook laptops at Dr. N.H. Jones, and we would order additional Chromebook laptops, or we would want to do that for our additional students, so that, again, we can continue that one-to-one initiative with the technology magnet that Dr. N.H. Jones certainly represents. And then, finally, another, and again, this is a proposed and fluid timeline that we value your input on, because we've put it together in about 48 hours. Mid-July, we would certainly coordinate with Ms. Beck's department, Elementary Ed Department, the curriculum resource moves, because again, when you're adding units, you know what that looks like. You add your curriculum, your textbooks, and you add your Tier 2 and Tier 3 intervention support as well. We've already begun to pull numbers on our proposed 62 students. We are looking at it as we are getting all 62, because certainly, we want all 62. And so, we are looking at preliminary data, looking at I Ready scores, looking at FSA scores on students that have taken FSA in the past, so that we can already begin to talk, and I can talk to Ms. Beck on, "Okay, Ms. Hul, what do you have there on campus? What are you going to need?" Because we're not going to wait until the beginning of July to say, "Oh, wait, here are our numbers. We have to start planning this now and moving forward." Okay, and with that being said, everyone likes to see some numbers, so projected budget costs on some of the things that I've mentioned. Again, I talked about four engaged classrooms, and that's if we, again, based on the numbers of the intent forms that we bring back, it might be two classrooms. It's approximately $5,000 for each engaged classroom, that includes the installation as well. That won't, even if we put it in today, it probably wouldn't happen for August, so, but at least we want to have it on the agenda so that we can have it hopefully by mid-fall. Two Chromebook carts and 60 Chromebooks equates to a cost of $18,080. I've added the cost of a paraprofessional currently. Dr. N.H. Jones staffing plan has two, and I'm not including the K paras, they have one K para for every K classroom, but they have two instructional paras for the rest of the school. They are not a Title I school, so we certainly want to be mindful that we might want to add at least one paraprofessional on their staffing plan, and I, so I put the cost, and that would be a base zero-year experience paraprofessional. I did the same thing for classroom teacher, base zero-year experience classroom teacher there, $53,088, because you know that not all of the teachers are going to come from existing schools. It's, it doesn't equate with class size, and you know this, it doesn't equate for taking four teachers from Shady Hill to four proposed units at Dr. it doesn't equate for taking four teachers from Shady Hill to four, um, proposed units at Dr. N.H. Jones. Um, it might be a .5 or a .3, but since Dr. N.H. Jones is currently, um, based on the lottery, we already have staffed all of our numbers, 1 to 18 in K-3 and 1 to 22 in 4th and 5th. Any additional students that we receive on those grade levels will, um, increase the class size. And so I just wanted to put that in there so that you had, uh, that, that information. And then a classroom set of instructional materials, uh, and the cost is up there for that and that's the basic, um, reading, um, language arts, math, science, social studies, curriculum programs that we have now. And knowing that we would transfer several of the curriculum resources to other, from other schools, again, I just wanted you to have that amount so that you, in case, uh, just, just to have all of the information in front of you. All right, and Mr. Ayers is gonna conclude us with the recommendation for next steps.
Ms. Kiner, before you leave, um, do we have places for the STEM lab and the science lab?
So, Ms. Hul and I walked the campus on Friday. Um, the science lab is currently in two classrooms, so it would continue to be maintained in one classroom. Um, and, and we can do that, we can make that work. Um, the STEM lab would, um, be in a smaller classroom. Uh, we have gifted in one of the classroom as, as well, I didn't mention that, but we do have gifted classes in one of the classrooms. And we looked at, um, if you've walked N.H. Jones campus, to the right of their media center, there's a smaller computer lab, um, that we would be able to put the gifted classroom into so that we can use the gifted classroom in, in, as one of the K-5 classrooms. So we found places, um, it's gonna be unique, we can make it work.
And I know that those are very important for your magnet program.
They are, and STEM, the STEM lab that Ms. Hul has actually put together when she was the AP there and continued as the principal, um, is certainly an important aspect of our magnet programs there, as well as the math, the science, and, and the technology as well. We want to be able to continue offering and we will continue to offer all of those entities that make Dr. N.H. Jones what it is. I spent nine years of my career at N.H. Jones and I certainly would not, um, allow, and I know Ms. Hul wouldn't either, um, we, we want to offer everything that we're offering now. But are there some things that we're gonna have to figure out? Absolutely, um, this gives us a shorter timeframe to do that. Um, and that's why I think, Mr. Ayers, the, the, the part next is the recommendations for next steps. We certainly value your input on, on helping make it successful for us.
Welcome back. Um, just, uh, as the Director of School Choice and Student Assignments, um, we've been working since December 1st with our magnet programs. We had our lottery system in place, we did the applications, we ran our lotteries in February, and we placed for our lottery schools, our magnet schools, we, we filled them. And so they're filled right now. And so in order to introduce 62 more kids into the school, um, is doable and it's the right thing to do, um, but the question is, is whether we do it immediately or we wait for time. And so my recommendation as the Director of School Choice is that we do this plan. We do allow these students to have the walk zone, but that we wait until the 2021 school year because we saw the cost that this is, we saw about moving teachers and things like that. And to be able to make sure that we do it in a correct manner and that we do it correctly and we make sure that we address all the issues. We put together this timeline in two days, trying to think of all the, um, challenges, as Pastor Cummings said last time, Thursday, to address all, but I don't know that we hit them all. And so, but if we want to move forward with the 1920 school year, it has to be done now. We have, that decision has to be made now, going forward. And so, but my recommendation as the Director of School Choice, living this day in, day out, placing our schools, talking with parents, working with things, is that we do it right and we do it in a proper timeframe and we do it for, and we start for the 2021 school year.
You said the cost and everything, I think the cost will still be next year. I mean, the cost really won't change, it is, it'll just be...
Well, we can plan accordingly for the cost, because right now, we haven't planned accordingly for the cost. And so, you know, we're, we'd have to pull out a night, I mean, where is Teresa, Teresa's not here. And so, she's, she's, but we, we, we could plan accordingly for the cost, with our Title IV grants and different things like that, whereas we're at the end of the year on those and we've already expended those.
And I hear...
So it would have to come from general fund.
School's out, I mean, we're gonna, I'm tempted to wait to do it right. I mean, we're gonna upset, you know, we've got teachers, we have to move units. I mean, I just, I would rather us do this right and be able to notify the parents in a timely fashion, really look at the, how are we gonna move the science lab and the STEM lab? And, um, I hate, I hate rushing things and I feel like, as much as it's the right thing to do and I want to see these kids walk, I, I don't wanna, I don't want to rush it. I think we need to take the time to plan. That's simply my feeling as a board member.
I think it's important to plan because as Mr. Ayers says, I wa, I want us to do it right and not get down the road. Um, but I do wonder, looking at the kind, these are incoming kindergarteners on here?
The two of them, yes.
That we see?
Yeah, they're currently in pre-K right now.
I'm curious, can we open it up for them though? I mean, it's a few students, because it would be a shame for them to start...
But traditionally, it's probably gonna be 12.
Okay.
You know, if we look...
Even 12, but it would still be tough to start another school with the option. So I would at least recommend starting on kindergarten, so then they can step in because if they're there a year, I mean, that's hard to go to first grade.
That would have been my, that would be my recommendation as well. Because you know you got some 5th graders and 4th graders and 3rd graders. They're not gonna really want to move. So we got to have a cutoff point at some point. So if we started with the kindergarteners this year, talking about 12 kids possibly, correct? So 12 possible kids, and then they know that from that point on, those other ones are gonna phase out as we move, and then move the other ones next year.
The only way that could be a problem would be if they have siblings that are at the other school that they want to be with their sibling.
Some of them will, and then those give them that option.
Give them that option, yeah.
Give them that option, but at some point...
Sometimes they babysit each other.
You gotta have a cutoff. You got to have a point where you, all these kids in the walk zone are able to go there. And they're going through the...
I think start as soon as we can in kindergarten, that parents want to do it now, I would say. I would definitely think that's a great suggestion.
I would agree to opening it up to the siblings of those kindergarteners because as a mom, I'm not letting my kindergartner walk to N.H. Jones.
Correct.
Even if they walk over, I mean, not any school. So you would want your older siblings to be able to have that opportunity.
And then spend the, spend the year getting, doing it right, making the transition so that it's right. I, I think that's a great idea.
The neighborhood will be excited about getting the plan made and everything. I can get behind it.
And Ms. Hul can breathe.
I can get behind it with these suggestions, there's, there's a lot of moving parts. Yeah, you guys did a fabulous job putting together a very professional timeline in 48 hours.
And I already done it, so now you know what to do, you already got your plan.
But usually, it's the second or third iteration, you really cover all of your, your bases. And, you know, we're batting 500 when it came to moving two units. Um, you know, one elementary school's doing well and, and another hasn't done so well, at least when it comes to 3rd grade proficiency, so we certainly want to be mindful. And I typically am the one that's like, yeah, let's do it. But, but I'm glad to hear your suggestion, I think that that's sensible. I love the idea of rolling in grade level by grade level even, like kindergarten next year, the following year, first grade.
No, I think we need to go ahead and, uh, roll in kindergarten...
That's what other very successful schools have done. So, but, you know, that's a conversation for another time, I, I can get behind what, what we just discussed. I mean, we see what happened when we rushed and, it's funny how the district can't put, it's too much of a rush to get it done, but yet, we did that in December when we put those uni-units at Spar and, and Anthony... In different circumstances, certainly. And it's been a fiasco. And it's been a challenge, a huge challenge. I also want to know, where is Evergreen in this? Well, Anthony's doing well. Um, where's Evergreen in this conversation in terms of getting kids back to their base school?
Evergreen's not part of this conversation, this was just...
That's what I was noticing.
Yeah, there are no, there are no students currently.
Yeah, and we, and we talked about it, that, at the workshop, that what started this whole conversation was those students that are being bused when they're right there at Saddlewood or College Park, all the way to Evergreen. So that's what started this initial conversation. So I, I do think we need to keep that at, at the forefront. But also, I want to be able to communicate well with, with parents, the magnet parents, the neighborhood parents, about this transition coming up. Because communication with all of this is gonna be key.
Right, I think it's good, I think I got a plan. And in terms of, uh, getting the message out to the community, is there a way for it to go out via text message or is Skylark the only way to go? Because a lot of times, parents, they don't even listen to those.
I'm gonna refer to Kevin on that one.
Yes, absolutely, we can send it via Skylark text message. The only caveat is the parents have to give us their phone numbers. That's a constant challenge that we face. Um, and they must keep those numbers updated. And the easiest way to do that is through Family Access. They can do that in the palm of their hand, 24/7, whenever, wherever. That's my 30-second commercial.
So, so what I'm hearing is that we going to, we are going to make the offer to the 12 potential kindergarteners.
Correct.
And then we will, we would transition the others for the 2020, 21 year, which gives us more time to make sure that we worked out all the bugs.
She also said that those kindergarteners have siblings.
If they have siblings, of course, of course, of course.
And we won't know that until they come to register.
Correct.
We won't know that until they come to register. And we can monitor that, I can't send out, because right now, we don't know who they are until they present themselves to us.
Well, this timeline's still pretty much being a fake for the kindergarteners.
Uh-huh. No matter how many kindergarteners register, would if only six register?
That's all right, that's...
Let the six come.
Let the six come. Okay, it'll just be a small class.
So, the, the issue would be is...
They'll just average it.
No.
Yeah, spread out. The issue would, in regards to the current timeline, is, you know, we, we wouldn't know who they would be. So we can't mail out letters tomorrow. So we're gonna have to catch them as they come in. And we can monitor that as they present to a school to register, um, where it'll get out, you know, in the community, that, you know, kindergarteners and as a student register, we know who they are. I can monitor, that's how I was able to pull the two that we know, is I know who has registered as a kindergartner's up till now. And right now, we only have two. And so, but as they come forward, we can then have individual conversations with them to find out what their intent is. And so my question to the board is, um, do we still want to give those kindergarteners the option to go to Shady Hill? Or is it now, you're in this zone, you're now walking to this school?
If they got a sibling at Shady Hill and parents, because you gotta look at the parents' work situation, they may have it already set up for things for the 5th grader, but let the parent know, okay?
So that they can transfer as a sibling, transfer to Shady Hill as opposed to being zoned Shady Hill?
Right.
If you're a kindergartner, you're now zoned.
I would let them know that within two years, your kid's gonna be at N.H. Jones, in their walk-in area.
Like next year?
So you want them to start at Shady Hill and then make them transfer back?
No, only if the parent, if the parent wants them to.
Yeah.
Whatever works best for the parents.
Yeah, but, uh, as a normal sibling transfer, we, we process sibling transfers all the time. And as a normal sibling transfer, they stay at their school. Even if the sibling is 5th grade, you're now 3rd grader, that sibling will stay. Now, the issue then becomes transportation, is we say that you can stay, but now transportation is on the parent.
If they got a 5th grader over there at Shady Hill and the kindergartner coming in, they may just want to stay together and work it out, but they know that, okay, that's for this year, but when the 5th grader graduates Shady Hill, he'll have the option to either come to N.H. Jones or stay at Shady Hill, and the kindergartner might, the mother might be fine since it's a walk-in to put, to separate the two, now that it's a walk-in. It's gonna kind of be probably an individual case, and you know what, there's only six or 12 of them and I, it sounds like a piece of cake to me.
And we already, uh, connected with Pam Eubanks too, for extended day. And the kids who are, um, in, in this local catchment area who need extended day, they'll be given a slot, so they don't have to worry about that.
Okay, I think it's good.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Are we good? Do you need clarification?
Well, just clarification is, ki, current kindergarteners, new, newly enrolled kindergarteners for the 1920 school years will be Jones students going in and then we'll work on the plan throughout this year. And so that then everybody else can be integrated in.
They'll be zoned with the option to go to Shady if they're siblings at Shady.
Correct. Well, and then we can translate that, we all, we do sibling transfers all the time already, so.
And at what point will we, at what, at what point will we have this cutoff? Um, because every year, they're gonna get, there's gonna be another year, another year, another year, another year.
Well, that'll, that'll be up, up to you as the board. And, you know, we will provide transportation, because I think it's only right that we can provide the transportation to those to Shady Hill to do that, but that will exhaust, you know, in three to four years.
These should be tricked out.
And then once, if they still want to go to Shady Hill, then they're, they're on transportation on their own.
Once they're zoned Jones, we, they just got rezoned, basically.
Basically, yeah.
They just got rezoned.
Then it's an out-of-area transfer.
Corrected zones.
Exactly.
Okay, are we good? Need any more clarification, are you good?
I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Ayers, Ms. Beck, Ms. Kiner, thank y'all.
Are our principals okay with this decision to transition through next year? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
No, that was it, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Martina Lopez?
No ma'am.
Mr. Gibbs?
Nope.
Ms. McCall?
Yes, um, this morning, I went to the Public Education Foundation Board meeting and there was a presentation by Ewan Hunter, who is the chemistry IB teacher at Vanguard High School. I never liked chemistry, but I sure wanted to be in his classroom, he, because he brings it to life. And he was there during the presentation, but to really think, the Ed Foundation, because he's received over $10,000 in grants. He talked about that they receive about $2.83 per student, per chemistry student. And in other, um, states, these chemistry students receive $10 to $12 because of all the replaceables, what breaks, and so, but it was just amazing. They went to an equine hospital and they were testing horses and, and just doing all sorts of real-life chemistry to make it very relevant. Mr. Viennello is one of his favorite words. Then they went out to Silver River and did some water testing. So, um, he doesn't have the results of, of his IB test back yet, but I bet a big majority of his students passed. But I just wanted to give a shout-out to Ewan, Mr. Hunter, Ewan Hunter. Uh, he's actually from Scotland. And before moving to the United, United States, he actually wrote, was on the team to write the chemistry standards for Scotland. So he is very, very talented. But it, it was a tremendous, uh, presentation and, um, our IB chemistry students at Vanguard High School are in great hands. And I enjoyed the graduations that I attended. It's always, uh, wonderful to see the smiles and, and hear the parents and see the tears and shake the hands of those kids and it was, it was great. Kind of glad it's all over for a little while, so, thank you, that's all.
Ms. Stacy?
I want to talk a little bit about, um, I sat down and looked at the 3rd grade scores and I'm so hoping that the, um, learning gains and everything will kind of offset some of the, what's going on in 3rd grade. But the fact is, this is 3rd grade. And of our 3,500 3rd grade students, 2,000 of them are not proficient. Do you all understand those numbers? A thousand of them are Level Ones, which means they're a good country mile from being proficient yet. 2,000 of 3,500 students are not proficient. And when that, when we say proficient, that's just proficient. That's still not really mastered at, like a 4, like a Level 4 and Level 5. This is like getting a C. In other words, you know, that's just, you know, getting there to be in a C or be an average. You know, last year, I talked to this district, kind of had this similar little conversation, talked to the administrators about how radically different this different district is from all of the other 66 districts except for one. Um, Manatee is the only other district that actually has less students promoted than we have. We kind of get the trophy for that almost, I mean, we're like, we get first runner-up. Out of all 67 districts, we are first runner-up for the least amount of students retained in the state of Florida. My phone with 2,000 students not proficient and not at grade level, my phone should be blowing up right now with parents saying, you know, you're gonna hold my child back? Yeah, you're gonna hold my child back? Because that's what the school board members in other districts are facing right now. Where they're withholding, like, holding back like 6, 7, 8% of the students. Guess who those districts are? They are our top five performing districts. Those kindergarteners and 1st and 2nd graders right now are being retained by huge numbers compared to what we do. You know, I've heard, I've sat on this school board for all these years and I've heard, well, we thought we would do better, we hoped we would do better, we believed we should've, should've, but again, we didn't. I heard the hopes and the shoulds and that, um, and the unicorns are gonna make it wonderful, but it's not wonderful, we have serious issues. We have serious issues. You know, I guess though, we can hope, we hoped for the third graders and it didn't work out. So, maybe the fourth graders made it work for them. I hope and pray that it'll be better for fourth grade. So, let's examine what the statewide evidence is on the top performing districts. We hold back .09% of second graders. That's what we held back last year. You know how many kids that is? Two. We held back two children. We were doing such a great job, yet we've got 2,000 non-proficient third graders right now, but we held back two second graders, which is .09 second graders, or two warm bodies. The state average at second grade is 2.3. So, that's averaged out with other districts that didn't, don't hold back a lot. But you know what percentage that means? That's a 2,455% less students we hold back than the state average holds, than the state holds back. If you don't understand 2,455%, look at it as payroll. If your salary went up 2,400%, you'd get that, okay? But that's what we, that's how off we are from just the state average on holding students back that aren't ready to go. Of second graders. You know, so why are the teachers, the second grade teachers are just flat burning out? They're yelling from the rooftops, "Some of my kids can't even do their alphabet. They're so far behind." Well, maybe I could help you understand why. Let's look at second grade, let's look at kindergarten retainage. These second graders, you know, the first grade teachers are having the same thing. So, let's just talk about kindergarten, because I had to run some rough numbers this afternoon. If you look at the, we, of our five top performing districts, a couple of the districts actually have lower socioeconomic, they have higher socioeconomic numbers than we have. I mean, they have socioeconomic issues. Union and Gilchrist, they have, you know, we always blame, oh, it's our socioeconomic situation that keeps our scores down. But two of our top five performing districts have it a lot worse than we do. They're up in the 90s percentages, and we're in the 80s on that. So, I just took the top five performing districts, and I averaged their kindergarten retainage percentages. And cross that with what we retain at kindergarten, the percentage that we retain. The top five school districts, just as an average, I took some, one holds 10% back, one holds 5% back, and I averaged it all together. Maybe they're top performing because they hold back 3,146% more kindergarten students than we hold back each school. Because, you know, we only held back like just maybe nine, or something like that. So, you know, we talk, we're all worried about the school letter grade and, oh, we talk about FSA and we fuss about all that and everything. But we need to address this retainage issue. Because if only two other districts, maybe three, have more Level Ones than this district has, but yet, we only held back, this is, this is at third grade, but we only held back two kids. This is the definition of insanity, that we keep doing this year after year after year. I came last year and gave y'all the same presentation. I had hoped that someone would hear me and hoped that someone would look at the top five districts, because you can go to the top 10, get the same picture. I just analyzed the top five. And we say, well, we can't do it all in a year, we can't, we can't, you know, go from zero to 10, you know. You can get there, it's gonna take average of three to five years to see a difference when you change curriculum. And I, I hear all that. But you know, Jefferson County is a very small district. It's got an elementary school, and then it's got a combination middle high. Jefferson County, Florida, school district was taken over by a charter school company. And do you know that they already have 45% proficiency in just after the second year? In a district that a charter school had to take over and bring them up like 10 points, I think from last year to this year. So, it can be done. We just gotta get the right, the right things going. So, considering we've got this problem, I also wanna say one more thing about Lake County. Lake County is almost an identical county to us, as far as size. Do you know, they retain 5,000% more students in kindergarten through second grade in Lake County than we retain. They retain a little, few, few less than us at third grade. We wait and retain all of ours at third grade. Lake County retains 70% of their K through third grade retainees before third grade. But we're holding back basically 100% of ours in third grade. Where Lake County, and guess what? We're ranked like number 62 or 3 now, they're ranked number 27. So, there's something to say about sending children on when they're not ready. And I don't, and I'm just a horse trainer, and I know that. I'm not an educator. So, we got some things that we need to work through. And I'm not really wanting to sit here and hope and pray that we do better next year. I think we need to go ahead and start looking into the future of what we need to do. The state has required, ask, has, is making a requirement, you have to auditor, you know, advising the board, and you gotta have these different things. A lot of districts have what they call inspector generals, where that's an advisory to the school board to kinda keep the school board notified, updated. It's an employee in the school district, is the employee, it's an employee of the school board. We could actually approve that position over the next few months, and we could bring in our transition superintendent into that position. So, that that superintendent could start to get an idea of what is needed here. Instead of him just coming in in, say, June or November, or whenever it would be. He would not be acting as a superintendent, but he could be advising the school board on, on, you know, when, when we're getting our staffing plans and we're getting things, and be advising us, you know. And he can't say, because he's not superintendent, this is the way it would be, but we could ask the superintendent to go back, give us a new recommendation. Because she brings the recommendations for the staffing plan. And so, this, this transitioning superintendent would be paid their regular superintendent, appointed superintendent salary. But I'm sorry, I have hoped, I could've, should've, I've prayed, and we didn't get it done for seven years here, that I've been on this school board. It's time for someone to take this bull by the horn. The voters have voted to give us the power to get this district turned around. They voted two to one, that they have confidence in this school board to get this done. And I think this is a position, I have spoken with Mr. Gibbs about this position, it is a possibility. And we can bring, we can do this and go ahead and bring, if, you know, if the superintendent, maybe he can't come then, or she. But that possibly, starting in January, before we start our new budget, that we would have that person in place to help us, advise us, get a good look at the district, meet, meet, you know, around, but he would be our inspector general office, but he would transition to the superintendent position. But I can tell you, doing nothing, this is where we're at. 2,000 non-proficient third graders, when only two second graders were retained. I can't even get my head wrapped around that. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Ms. Devour?
Ms. Stacy, definitely hear what you're saying about retention, being a high school teacher and having kids in my classroom that were reading maybe at third grade level. And you couldn't blame their learning disabilities on that, to be that far behind. It was a combination of getting passed through and a combination of being warehoused in hopes that because maybe they had some behavior issues, too, that they would just drop out 16th. So, there's definitely work that needs to be done in that direction. And if a kid comes in so far behind, that they're just, you're just continuing the problem by continuing to promote them, you know.
There's only one other district in the state.
You want it to make sense. And that doesn't make sense to me. Attendance is also a huge issue. If we're gonna move kids, they have to be at school. And when I've worked with some of my schools over this year that were having double-digit, triple-digit days of non-attendance on kids, and they were getting up, kids were getting up to over 100 days of absent, 200 days. And it wasn't, it's not being addressed by the court system. So, it's a school problem, it's a community problem, it's a society problem. It's our problem.
But we're promoting them.
And, so I, I look forward to having more conversations about that. Because I've, I've lived it as a classroom teacher, so I know exactly what you're talking about. And it is heartbreaking to have a kid leave school at 18 years old, barely being able to read the labels on a can in a grocery store. So, as far as the rest of it goes, I'm looking forward to, once the board approves, Ray and Associates, who was our selection for how to begin things and how to put things in place. I know we all take the community's confidence very seriously and, and how we're going to move forward on things. So, I'll be interested to hear their input going forward on steps to take. And on a little bit of a lighter note, I, I do have to transition to, especially being a new school board member, attending my first graduation season, it was absolutely fantastic. It really, really was. And so, when you get to see the other side of a lot of hard work being put in, it does give you a hope for the, for the future, and it, and it makes me continue my prayers. And it was just fabulous. The community involvement that we have, the support that we have, is, I think, just getting stronger and stronger. And that bodes well for, for the future. With that in mind, I, I hope to keep at the forefront of the conversation that we really have clearly outgrown this meeting room and, and this space. And if we're serious about the community being involved, if we're serious about talking about really taking the bull by the horns, which is what we're doing as this board. I mean, we are taking things on that are historic and, and looking to solve problems with the community. And, and I think that's something we should all be proud of as, as the new board. We've only been together for six months, and, and we're not hiding behind any curtains. You know, we're bringing it out there, and, and I think that that's going to help us continue to move forward and be successful. But I really would like to hear about options, so that the community feels comfortable coming in. We need everybody, all hands on deck, to solve our district's problems. And with that, I will just end it and say, thank you very much, have a great evening.
Mr. Cummings?
Um, it's been a very interesting meeting tonight, because we've heard a gamut of things. And we've heard those, those numbers that were not good. Optimistic, but not good. And Ms. Stacy brought some great things that I had kinda alluded to a little bit earlier with the retention and how we're putting kids, moving kids forward with portfolios. Our job as a school district is to prepare kids to succeed and prepare kids for the next level and to get them to where they need to be so that they can be successful. And pushing them along is not the answer. I, I see that as not just pushing them along, but I see that, see them as pushing them out, out of opportunities, out of chances of where they can do things great. So, we have to make sure that we're, we're preparing our kids. And it starts at an early age, and it's a, it's a team effort. It's not just the school district, it's the schools, along with the community, along with every person that, that child touches, or touches that child. All of us have a, an interest in that. So, we have to, we, we can't keep kicking the can down the road. We can't. We have to deal with the, with those tough issues. And I think this board is, is addressing those issues. I want to, again, shout out to Mr. Ayers and his department, them. Because we started out talking about Evergreen. And in talking to Evergreen, we kept looking at how we could make some changes. And what people heard here about putting NH Jones' walk-in area back in place, it is historic, you said that.
That's my bucket list.
It is, it is historic, because I think that, that walk zone has been out of play for many, many, many years. And I think it's just gonna make some of the things that we talked about with going to community schools, make it a stronger school district by us having a community school with NH Jones'. It was always, it was a community school, I went there, and, and it's going to be a community school again. And that makes people have a vested interest in the school that's across the street from their house. So, I wanna thank that team that really, really, really worked hard on that. Because, and we just, we just talked about this Thursday, and here they are.
Yeah, exactly.
Tuesday, with the holiday and with the plan in place, that we could've moved forward, that we could've moved forward this year. But I think that if we're gonna be good stewards and smart and make good decisions, we have to not rush to do anything. We have to be calculated and strategic in what we do. So, I thank, thank them for that. I also wanna thank Dr. Mayor, Ms. Barber, and Ms. Horns back there, and some others. We met on Friday morning, early Friday morning, concerning this exemplary school district and them taking the charge. And there were some community, there's some community members here tonight who know that there's a community component that's needed for us to become an exemplary district. So, I see you out there, and I thank you guys for coming. Some left, but we thank them for coming, because it takes a lot of different things to move our school district in the right way. And that exemplary school district is one, one of those things as well. My first graduation season, extremely busy, extremely busy. It was, it was truly an awesome time to see all of these kids that graduated in Marion County. To see what we saw from our vantage point of these kids going across the stage. Some nervous, some excited, some dancing, some shouting, some crying. There was a gamut of, of, of emotions going across that stage. And when I look at those, I think it was, I, I didn't have the exact number, I started trying to keep the numbers. I think it was almost about 3,000 students that graduated in Marion County the past two weeks. And that's from Hillcrest, which was the first one, all the way to Dunellen, which was the last one. I think about 3,000 students. That's great, that's great. And to have schools in our district that have 90% graduation rates, that's even better. So, that's a wonderful thing. And just looking at those kids, that lets us know that the future is bright. There, we, we oftentimes look at the dark spots, but graduation was a bright, was a bright moment for us. I do wanna say to all of our students, teachers, staff, everybody have a safe summer. It's summer vacation, things happen. I encourage safety, I encourage extra safety. Be real safe, pools, lakes, water, all those type things. Please be safe. And, and thank you, Officer Woods, for being here tonight. Dr. Mayor already told you thank you, but I have to tell Dr. Mayor, she asked about the baby. She's the youngest member of my congregation, and she's the quietest member of my congregation. And she never, she never cries, she never, she is a good baby. So, I thank you. Thank you. Y'all have a good summer.
Ah, thank you, that was good. I agree, Mr. Cummings, tonight was an interesting evening. I think we thought we were gonna be out fairly quickly and, and we're not.
We need to just get over that and never have a...
Yeah, we're just never gonna stay. I did receive a phone call today, and with summer vastly, or not vastly, it is here. So, I didn't really have time to wait or whatever. But I received a phone call from a parent today from the bands. And I guess it's my understanding, if what I'm hearing is correctly, is does Marion County, are we the only county in the district that has, or in the state, not the district, that has heat restrictions for, heat restrictions for the band members?
And they're practicing.
And they're practicing in the summer? Are you aware of that?
We can get you that data. It's my understanding that we, we gauge them like we do the football teams.
Okay, is that a county policy, or is that state policy with their heat restrictions?
Policy?
Or you're, what you're requesting of them?
What is it that we're requesting?
Oh, I guess the students are not... Oh, I guess the students are not allowed to be outside in March, um, to march and practice marching in their band before five o'clock in the afternoon in the summers. Because of the heat?
That is.
Probably, yeah, because of, the same with football.
Well, and, and the Florida Athletic Association, I believe, set the guidelines for athletics. And so, and I had conversations with a few parents about this too. And so, I guess we don't have enough fields. So, there is a concern about band, bands being able to practice and marching on the fields. And they need to practice. We have new band members and, but, uh, the time restrictions for the heat.
But is that county or statewide? I understand the heat restrictions to a degree, but their concerns are that, um, they're not getting the endurance and the stamina that they need. So, when they actually do perform, they're not used to it. And it's my understanding that they're wearing, it's not exactly the same as football. So, I guess they're wearing shorts. They're, they even wear like, I guess, a candle pack where they can drink water, they have hats, they have sunglasses. And it's my understanding, they don't even stay out there for hours at a time. But, you know, at, I guess the instruction they're receiving now is that they can't be out there at all. And, um.
Yeah, the kids are on PE fields.
And the kids are on PE fields. So, I just, I'm, that's why I was curious. And I think there's a lot of misunderstanding. Is it a county mandate or is it rec, you know, coming from the state? And what does it consist of? You know, again, I'm just hearing from.
I think part of it is county. I think that the, um, my understanding is maybe that the hours, uh, for the athletics, that it's basically the same time and I think it was by the county. And, um, so the bands aren't going to be able to practice at the times they normally practice. And it, it has been a concern.
Well, why would, then why don't we address that and fix it?
Yeah, I think it probably needs to be addressed because we're hearing from the community and, and I hear them. I mean, if they're not used to being outside marching, how are you gonna build that stamina and stuff? And it's my understanding that their, you know, band directors would be out there. There's also people who, um, who maybe have training or equipped, they have lots of water. They even wear, I guess they, they wear something that they can have sit. They go in. So, I.
But aren't, aren't, okay, aren't, the athletics allow football players to do two-a-days during the summer for so many weeks? They're allowed on the condition throughout the, throughout the summer. So, why aren't?
Can I make a suggestion? Maybe we need to bring in, uh, at our next work session, maybe, uh, have Mr. Phillips and then maybe Mrs. Crowder and we can have a conversation about, because we need it to be fair and we need the, the kids to be able to practice. So, what are this, so what is the solution? Because if the hours are the same, then the band, football's gonna take precedent over band, unfortunately it sometimes. And they're gonna have the field and the band members aren't. And you have to, as being a band member, especially our new, the new students coming in, they have to be able to march on a field for the steps and all of that, so.
They do have to, but they also.
I've never heard of anything quite like this.
This is what's happening, so.
But that's what I'm asking. Most football teams have a practice field. And they practice on the practice field, so the, the, the field is open.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of land at a school.
I, I don't know. I, I don't know where the football, I thought the football teams practiced on their football fields.
No, no, they practice on the, on the, on the practice field.
Dr. Mayor, have you heard anything about this five o'clock practice? I mean, is this something?
Well, yeah, for football, absolutely.
But not for the band?
I haven't heard about it for the band, so we'll look into that. And my sense is, is that it is the same as the Athletic Association just because of the nature of them being outdoors. But we'll get, I was just.
Yeah, I, I really think we, let's talk through this and let's see if, if we can't come to resolution because it, it's, it's come up.
Yeah.
And summer's here and it sounds like it's an important thing that we need to deal with right now. So, when, how fast can we? I don't know that we all need to, we need to, somebody needs to maybe send us some emails, get us updated on this. I don't know that this is something we have to.
I don't think.
Sit and have a big meeting about. This is just, I mean, I was raised in Palm Beach County, I was in the band. I twirled a baton and we were out in the sun and none of us died. And I don't understand what this snowflake stuff is about, that the kids can't march in the band in the afternoon? In shorts, they're wearing shorts.
They're wearing shorts and glasses and hats and water.
We're turning them into snowflakes.
Well, I think, I think there seems to be consensus with the board that we need to address that. Hopefully, I, I don't think it needs to come to a board meeting.
I think it just needs to be decided. This is ridiculous.
You can talk about it in the next.
Whoever's come up with this plan needs to tell us how they came up with it. And we need to say it needs to go away.
So, maybe next Thursday, um, if you don't mind whoever, is it Mr. Phillips that's, or who? If someone can just tell us how, um, that mandate is gonna be changed and how the band can go out and perform and work on their stamina and endurance so that they can be kids, you know? So, all right, so that, and then, um, Ms. Stacy, talking, um, I'm gonna just come off what you said a little bit. With the retention, again, a third grade teacher, I have a lot of experience in third grade. And when students are retained year after year, third grade becomes, they, they're looked at as the safety net. So, whoever, you know, they come, they come, they come, here we are. The third grade teachers catch them and then they can't move further. But the issue that takes place is by the time usually when they're in third grade and they haven't been retained, but they don't know how to read, they're defeated. They're defeated. And so, you're dealing with a whole different ball of wax at that time. So, at, at first I thought you were gonna say that we should be retaining earlier, you know? And we should. And kindergarten and first grade depending.
And that's what I'm saying, we should be retaining, like all the other, there's only two districts in the state that's not. Us and Manatee. Everybody else is. And the top performing districts in the state are retaining tremendous numbers.
Yeah, and so, I, I agree. We do need to look at that. But I'm also gonna say, I agree with you, um, that we need, if the position is there and Mr. Gibbs, I would appreciate a work session for us to discuss the inspector general. Because we do not need to be waiting until next year for somebody to come in and lead our district. We need someone that could come in and learn our district. That way, when next year, we can be looking at our staff and plans, we can be looking at our budgets. The community did speak and the community wants an appointed superintendent to come in and lead this district. And the scores were very telling. And it needs to be addressed.
You know, and talking to me about that inspector general position, um, the, the current superintendent, uh, Dr. Mayor, she would only, the budget that we put together next winter, the budget we put together, she, if she stayed until the end of, until November, whenever that time is, she would only be dealing with that budget from middle of August, you know, right, right there, that little period time, where the new superintendent is gonna have the budget the whole rest of the year. That person needs to be on board with us when we're putting that budget together. Now, the superintendent, because of the state law, we can't have two superintendents. That but superintendent can't recommend to the board that we do things, but he can advise us. We can, and then the superintendent can bring her recommendation. And we can say, we do not accept that recommendation, please bring us another recommendation, until we get the recommendation that we need, that we can move forward with. And so, that is very legal to do that.
I hear what y'all are saying, but what I see with that is a two-headed monster.
No.
I, I see, I see, I see it as a two-headed monster. And you're gonna have some comp, you're gonna, we're gonna be setting ourselves up for going backwards for where the board has came from. You can't have two heads. Because you're saying, what you, what you're saying is.
Districts have inspector generals all over the state.
What you're saying, but this is, this would be completely different. This would be completely different. This inspector general would be the appointed superintendent. And so, you're saying this inspector general is gonna make a recommendation and if the, the current superintendent make, we're gonna tell the current superintendent, we're gonna, we're gonna go with the new appointed inspector general and go with that. That's a two-headed monster.
And I agree. And if we're trying to do all this, why are we hiring Ray? If we're trying to do all this ourselves, why are we hiring Ray and Associates? When, when would they be coming, when would they be coming on?
I got their signed contract last week, so it'll be on the next boarded in to free approval.
Well, I think we need to start taking some advice and direction from people that have been doing this transition for thirty-three years or forty years. And, uh, you know, Miami Dade has an inspector general that they pay a hundred thousand dollars a year and they're not performing that well. So, I, I'm not feeling, I would have a lot of questions about that.
Well, I just have a lot of concerns that we're failing as a district and we keep going backwards. And our, like I said, our community voted. And the only reason why the sitting superintendent is here now is because she isn't, took an oath into office until November of twenty twenty. That is the reason why. And the community, my thoughts when I'm out there talking, the community thought, they did not know that they would be waiting till November of twenty twenty. And, um, so, as it is, maybe as you described, a two-headed monster. Right now, are we, are you okay just declining? And, and having a budget and spending money and things that may not necessarily be right for our community and using taxpayers' dollars? I mean.
I'm not okay with that either. What I'm not okay with is, is us not getting anything done. I think we have to work with Dr. Mayor, as long as she's the superintendent, and move, move the agenda on what we need to get done. We're in the process of trying to get an appointed superintendent. We're moving that for, that pension forward. We need to do that. But to bring another entity into this is just going to be confusion. We, we got serious issues, very serious.
Right, well, I think, but I think it's important to have the transition that even if they're not acting, but they come in knowing that they will be the appointed, they can come in and they can walk the schools, they can learn our system.
I disagree.
I don't.
When does Ray start?
Two-headed monster. As soon as the contract, as soon as we approve the contract.
And is the contract.
Then that can be one of our first questions to them, you know? I mean, we're hiring them for guidance.
Well, then we'll talk to them about it. And that's a good, Nancy, that's a good idea. We'll talk to them and see like what happens in other districts whenever we've got situations like this. Because all I know is that last year, there were like seven districts performing worse than us. And now, there's four districts performing worse than us at third grade. Now, the picture could change, maybe the learning gains will help. We're back, I hope, I pray. I'm, you know, and that's good. So, maybe this is just a third grade snapshot. But it's, it's showing me what our second graders did last year because they got moved up to third grade, but they're looking at that. So, for right now, we have a third grade snapshot. And what I do know is that we are not, top performing districts are retaining the majority of their students before they retain at third grade. See, in the state.
Before they hit that third grade wall.
In the state, we're one of the higher percentage districts that does it at third grade. I think we had seven or eight percent we did at third grade. But we only had point oh seven, or point three percent at another grade. Where other districts, they've held like six percent back in kindergarten, three percent in first grade. You know, their percentages go down. They actually start out like six percent in kindergarten, then they might go to three percent and then they go to. Then by the time they get to third grade, they're only maybe retaining two or three percent. So, you know, it's upside down for us. And so, um.
And I think we're all in agreement with that. I think every last one of us.
I told, I said this exact same thing last year. Word for word.
You know what, Nancy did bring this up and then.
Word for word. I've always contended that if they're not ready to move from kindergarten to the first grade, keep them. I, I mean, I've always been prepared of that.
Kindergarten.
If they're not ready for second grade, keep them in first grade. Because if we don't keep them.
First of all, and their, um, concerns about wait until third grade to retain the students, that we should be looking at kindergarten and first grade. Okay, so the board has spoke, okay, we're good.
Yeah, Union County holds eighteen point four-five percent of their, well, that was the year before square, so it's real close to that this year. But like eighteen percent of their kindergartners are held back. But then when they get to third grade, they're only holding four and a half percent back, where we're holding like seven and a half percent back at third grade. So, it backs up.
Is that some unwritten policy that we're going by by not retaining kids?
We'd never have done it in this district, long before Dr. Mayor was here. This has been a long-going thing. When my child was sitting at Madison Street thirty years ago, or twenty-eight years ago, I looked at Citrus County, I said, why is, we were doing our little advisory council thing and I said, why is Citrus County outperforming us on, we had all different tests in those days? And look, wait a minute, they don't, they don't, they hold people back. And I remember Rhodia Berry saying to me, well, our district does not, and, and another principal was there, Lynn Herrick, we don't hold, um, we don't hold students back here. This is thirty years ago.
See, that's something.
But Citrus County holds them back, holds them back, big time. And I'm going, well, why don't we hold them back? That was thirty years ago.
See, that's something that's, that, that hasn't always been that way. And the reason I say that is because, and I went to school, I went to first grade, second grade, ele, primaries, primary, not elementary, primary, back in the, and I remember in my neighborhood, almost everybody repeated the first grade. So, they told me, if you made it through the first grade, you're smart. I made it through the first grade. So, and, and I'm being one hundred percent, almost everybody in my neighborhood, Beth, you were probably teaching then and you know I'm right about this. Most of the kids held back at the first grade. And if they did not, and they kept them there to make sure that they were proficient enough to go forward. And when they went forward, they didn't stay back anymore.
No, once it got caught up, yeah.
Yeah, it's easier on the kids to hold them back at a younger age.
About it being so different, and it's stuck in my mind for all these years, that they withheld a lot, they retained a lot of kids.
It's a culture, it's a culture we've created and we just need that to shift it to what's best. It's better for children to be held back in kindergarten and first grade.
Exactly, and if you let the parents know, hey, if your kid is not performing at kindergarten, at first grade, we're not gonna push them. We're gonna hold them back to make sure that they're prepared to go to the next, the next stage.
I really can't imagine there'd be one teacher out there that would disagree with this.
And I got a phone, I, I can share this. I got a phone call today, I got a phone call today from a parent in Dunellen that told me her daughter, she was just told today that her daughter was gonna be held back. And she wanted to know, she just found out. And she's saying, whoever, whoever comes out, do whatever. I don't want her to be pushed up. Because she, the same information I just got today that, that we heard here that if she passes the test at the end of the summer, then she'll go to the next grade.
By the skin of her teeth.
The parent said, listen, if my kid's not ready, I don't want her to go up. I need her to be where she needs to be to be successful. And those are tough decisions. And if parents are saying they want their kids to be successful, the parent understands what's going on.
I can tell you, the DOE, they call it, when you're promoting by portfolio, they say some districts abuse portfolios. That's what they call it. They abuse portfolios, that's a word that the state person uses.
It's okay, no, we're good, all right. I do, we are gonna move forward unless there's something really pressing, but, okay, so we're.
All right, before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through May seventh, twenty nineteen. Ms. Martina Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak to disciplinary matter? Okay, good. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student J D nineteen dash one five seven, J D nineteen dash one five eight, J D nineteen dash one five nine and J D nineteen dash one six one without educational services for the remainder of the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year and all of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year?
Same.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cummings. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student J D nineteen dash one five three and J D nineteen dash one five four, J D nineteen dash one five five E, J D nineteen dash one five six, J D nineteen dash one six zero, J D nineteen dash one six two and J D nineteen dash one six three with educational services through the remainder of the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year and all of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year? Moved by Mr. Cummings. Second by Ms. McCall. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion passed five zero. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Cummings, second by Ms. McCall. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion passed five zero, zero. And our meeting is adjourned at eight nineteen P M.